Welcome, everyone, to the October 10th meeting of the Arlington School Committee. I'm Lynn Carden, Chair, and Jeff Theillman had a work engagement and may be joining later, depending on our timing. Jane Morgan has a family engagement but will be joining later. Joining us is AEA Rep. Juliana Keys and Arlington High Rep. Margot Moore. He is a senior at Arlington High School and you're welcome to participate and just sort of indicate that you want to have something to say. You need to wait for the microphone to be handed down and then, just so people can hear you at home, and we welcome your participation. All right, so we have more, we have new art this evening. It is from Arlington High School. So we will start with Board A back there, and on the left side is from the AP Art and Design class, Drawing 2D Design and 3D Design. "The AP program in studio art and design is intended for highly motivated students who are seriously interested in the study of art at the college level. The curriculum addresses three major concerns: a selection of the student's best work over two years, a year-long study in the creation of an in-depth portfolio of one central theme, and the study of major movements in art history and influences of various cultures with a focus on contemporary art." On the right side is Ceramic Sculpture and Pottery I. In Ceramic Sculpture and Pottery I at the high school, students are practicing and honing skills of constructing with fire clay to create both functional pottery and sculptural pieces. Through lots of practice, students have learned hand-building techniques such as pinching, coiling, and slab building, as well as using the potter's wheel. They have recently begun to apply and combine those skills in the creation of more complex work. Students have also begun to explore adding color to work through glazing. Over to B over here. This is a selection of individual pieces from Ms. Robola's classes that made up this year's large-scale collaborative installation in the art hallway of Arlington High School. The theme of the work is the idea of growth. Over 300 students were asked to design, create, and create a piece that visually represents a form of growth, whether it be physical, emotional, organic, or any other kind of growth. All pieces came together to make a large garden-like installation that was intended to celebrate diversity within our community and contribute to an inclusive and welcome learning environment. C over here. "Students in the new course, Drawing I, explored a series of academic skills of observation where they applied different drawing techniques. This included a sequence of drawings focusing on line, edges, space, relationships, and form. Students applied different techniques with charcoal and graphite to render objects from careful observation. This variety of drawings will lay a foundation for the rest of the year." This is also continued onto Panel D. Panel D also contains collaborative works mentioned previously for the Growth Collaboration And then in the back on E, Digital Photography. On display are photos inspired by a student's family heritage. Students are encouraged to explore multiple aspects of photography. All are expected to develop a personal voice with thoughtful and meaningful expressions through a variety of subject matter and techniques. Many students are attracted to this media, not only because the results are so immediate, but because they seek an alternative means of expression. I guess also over there in display E are Zen Tangles, Foundations of Studio Art. A Zen tangle is a complicated-looking drawing that is built one line at a time. Simple tangles or patterns are combined in unplanned ways that grow and change in amazing directions. Also known to help relieve anxiety and stress, help you focus and relaxes your body, Zen tangles help to build confidence in one's creative abilities. Thank you to all of the Arlington High School art teachers for putting this together and all of the art students on your wonderful work. All right, so next we're going to go to the AHS Service Learning and Cultural Exchange And I believe Mr. Bostis is here to present or ask, answer any questions that we have. So for new trips, we have the sponsors come to us to basically describe, you know, why they're pursuing this trip.
Sure, sure. So this trip, it was born out of our experience with Arlington, running our two South Africa trips that we've taken Arlington students to. And the last trip we took to South Africa, we actually were flying over Puerto Rico just around the time of the hurricane. And what struck me was, here we're taking, at that time it was 47 high school students, thousands of miles to go serve the poor in South Africa. If you notice the accent, that's where I'm from, but I'm an American citizen. And I was sitting there going, we're flying over American citizens in need. These kids are going to go do this phenomenal work. They did an amazing job doing what they did. And we began to say, well, what about the need in Puerto Rico? So as a company, we began to explore doing those trips to Puerto Rico. We sent staff members over, got to know people on the ground, got in relationship with a couple of nonprofits there, as well as sending some board members over to resource and sort out a trip that we could offer. And we began to talk to Arlington about that, and we brought an initial trip to the board last year which you approved. Unfortunately, through some logistical error, we were only informed with three weeks left to the start of the trip, and we're like, there's no way we can pull that off in three weeks, so we asked for a change in the date. But the purpose of the trip is to do very much the same as what we do in South Africa, which is introducing kids to educational elements that they're experiencing here in their school, but taking them out of the classroom so that they have a different aspect of learning. The way I try to describe it is putting flesh and blood onto your subjects. So they're going to go and do service work in Puerto Rico, working with a community called Children of New Hope in Sabanaseka, which is a suburb of San Juan. And they'll be working with that nonprofit that reaches about 150 children and doing their work with them. Whatever that nonprofit needs at the time, what we're working with them now is they'll be preparing for their summer camp, so they'll be working in the organization preparing them for their summer camping. But we tie to the service project, learning opportunities, so that they would learn the culture, the story and history of Puerto Rico, and begin to dismantle some of the perspectives that people have about seeing Puerto Ricans as second-class citizens, substandard citizens, so bridging those gaps in relationship building, so that students, when they come back here, begin to view their environment differently. And we did that in South Africa, where we introduced them to the apartheid structure of South Africa, the first Third World system in South Africa. And as happens, kids began to ask themselves, well, are those same elements present back in our school, in our town, in our country? And we're able to break through some of those barriers where some significant conversations can happen. The idea of the Puerto Rico trip is something that's more accessible to more people. It's a cheaper trip, it's closer. I mean, 18 hours of flying is a killer. Four hours, I'll take that any day. And Liz Morris, as the teacher, is very intrigued by this on a number of different fronts, to bring her teams closer, to make it accessible to more children in the school, and then achieve something great with it that might be something that is an ongoing opportunity as we go through it. The difference between Hammer and Chisel and some of the other tour companies out there, the major difference is that Hammer and Chisel is not a tour company. We don't run lots of tour businesses with other agencies and school trips is one thing we do. We're an education enhancement company, so we try to work with specific schools and specific teachers, with them selecting goals for the trips, and then we tailor the trip to those goals. So our staff go along on the trip, they teach on the trip alongside the teachers, they use opportunities to broaden and widen children's perspectives and bringing some unique elements. So I do the South Africa trip because that's where I grew up, so I have some special insights to that, but other staff members provide different aspects to that. So Liz Morris is the key teacher on this trip. I believe she's asked Kevin Toro if he can be the male attendant on the trip. I don't know where she stands with that. Obviously, I have no say in which teachers go, but we'll be sending two staff members along on the trip, our staff members, and participating in that. I'll be doing the South Africa trip, which is also on your docket for approval tonight, which is at the same time. So we have two Hammer and Chisel staff members going to Puerto Rico and two going to South Africa. So that's the trip in a brief breakdown. Any questions?
I was just curious about what are the service opportunities in the two places? What do you expect students will be doing?
In Puerto Rico?
In Puerto Rico, yeah.
Yeah, in Puerto Rico, they'll be working with Sabanaseka, so they're going to be setting up their, preparing for their camps. So they will be doing a mixture of classroom preparation, camp preparation work. We also are trying to do some community work. The details of that haven't been worked out too specifics yet, but we're looking at taking some students into the Sabanaseka community and working with the elderly, so shut-ins who need visits or yard cleanup, those sorts of things. There'll be two to three service projects spread over three days, so they won't be working eight till five, but it will be more like a nine till two timeframe.
And in South Africa?
In South Africa, we'll be working with an organization called Mold Empower Serve. They work with the homeless in the northern suburbs of Cape Town, so the students will do what they've done on previous trips, a street stall where they offer, they set up and run a clothing store for the homeless, where the students are serving as retail clerks, and they guide homeless people who get to choose their clothing. And then, because they choose their clothing, there's dignity in that, and they don't pay for it, but we wrap it up and bag it for the homeless person, as well as doing other work around the homeless area. They have a nightly shelter that they run, we'll be cleaning that up, perhaps prepping their food bank that they run. And as part of an expanded experience, we'll go to their after-school centers that they run with elementary-age kids in the afternoons, on two of the afternoons, there'll be options to do those. And they get to play with the kids and hang out with them.
Any other questions?
Not necessarily a question, but I think it would be beneficial for us to have the students, when they come back, do a small presentation of what they've experienced and stuff. I think it would be good for them and good for the community.
Sure, yeah.
As a follow-up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
One more question, sorry.
Sure.
Just one more question. So I saw that people can donate to a scholarship fund. I know that we have a scholarship fund at the school. Is that, or would students be eligible for that as well? Okay.
Yes, they'd be able to access. And we are working with a teacher that we can increase the price slightly and add a scholarship to the price so that we can subsidize that. That's just something that the school needs to say they want us to do, and we can add that on to it.
Okay.
I don't think it's right for us to just start charging more and call it a scholarship, but if you want us to do that, that's easily accessible.
Okay, great.
Just a question about the contract which I signed here, which I hadn't seen before. Do we normally sign contracts with the tour vendors?
After you approve it, usually I sign it or...
Oh, okay. Because we talked about the policy, we were trying to make a distinction between teacher-sponsored trips and school-sponsored trips.
Sure.
And I thought we were mainly approving teacher-sponsored trips. Teachers that were, they were coming to us for approval because they were using school resources to, you know, promote the trips.
Right.
But sort of, when you cross the line into a school-sponsored trip, there's liability issues that we really haven't looked at. So do you see these as school-sponsored trips or teacher-sponsored trips?
I don't, the reason we asked for a contract with the school is just so that we can, with our board, start making good conscious bookings.
Right.
Because in the past, when we don't have them, teachers can pull out at any minute. There's no financial obligation to that. It just authorizes us to begin the work. So I don't, I work with so many different districts that they code that differently, so I would let you decide which one it is. We just need to be kind of authorized to approve it. Having said that, though, we kind of ran into a thing where the flight bookings needed deposits paid ahead of time before the last committee meeting, so we took the risk on that and paid the deposits for the flights because the flight prices in April are just astronomically ridiculous. I got quotes that were literally $2,000 a part per person, and so we wanted to secure the good pricing we had. So we paid for the deposits, they're non-refundable, but we'll take that risk, so, but that's why.
Great, I think we may want to consider looking into some more...
Yeah, I mean, the whole thing is, is that our two issues were, one, in terms of how, of money flowing through the district, and as the district paying a large chunk to a vendor which presented legal issues, and then the other was, of course, to ensure that liability is properly assigned.
So I can answer, just from history, that we've done both with Arlington. Our first South Africa trip, all the money came to the school and then the school paid us money. The second trip we did, we collected all the money and nothing came through the school, which was a lot simpler and easier.
Yeah, we tried to get away from that.
That's the direction we go.
That's what we really feel we need to do because the issues with having the money flowing through us.
Yeah, it's very, it's tough, yeah.
That becomes a direct relationship between the student and you, and we're just sort of saying, okay, you're a private operator, we're allowing you to talk to our students and recruit them, but it's your trip and not ours.
Right, and that's probably how we would view it, is to prefer doing it that way because it also gives us more accessibility to the financial oversight of it.
And then, one last comment, which is probably not for you, but for the administrative team. I'm glad to see a domestic trip, but it's still an expensive domestic trip, right? So we still have parents that are, you know, a little frustrated that it's $2,000, $3,000, $4,000 for their kids to go on these trips. And, you know, to the extent they really are teacher-sponsored, then it's around the teacher's interest, and they're interested in Spain or whatever, fine, but to the extent that it's a little bit of a school-sponsored trip, maybe we can get some teachers together to do a trip to Washington like we used to, or a trip to, you know, New York City and do a service trip in New York City, something like that. So I think, you know, it's great that we offer these, but it might behoove us to promote something a little bit more affordable.
There's been discussions about that, and in fact, we've had trips to the Grand Canyon and I think, well, some other, there were some other places in this country where this was sponsored by a middle school teacher, and actually always had something like 10 to 15 students that would go and a couple of, so we have done that, not so much at the high school, though on those trips there were, I think, some high school students. No, we don't disagree, and in fact, this issue of whether you reduce the price or you add a scholarship, these are things that actually Dr. Jenga and I were talking about the other day. We do have some money for scholarships, which has a process that goes through, you know, our international coordinator. So it's a very, we want to promote students having these opportunities. What I think all of us know from our own experience, how transformative these trips are and how world, your worldview changes. I think that that's been really true of all the students that have gone on the South Africa trip, it has been so impactful. And I agree with Mr. Haner, I think it would be great to have some of the students come if they would be willing to do that and talk about their experience. We've had, having 47 students go to South Africa, given the cost, is huge. One of the things that I feel strongly about and is shared by others is that we want to create a map of trips that we know that we're going to be doing over four years. So when the eighth-grade parents come and when the eighth-grade students come, we say, I want you, these are the trips that will be available during your high school years so you can plan ahead. And I think it's very helpful when students have that and they say, well, I really want to go on that music trip, or I want to go on the Holocaust trip, or the exchange to France, or the South Africa trip, that they can plan and start savings for that because I think it makes more, has more meaning for them when they participate financially in this. So actually, that's one of the things we're working on developing for this year.
Something I recommended to Chelsea High School, who were asking about trips, because obviously they were saying, we just can't afford South Africa. I recommended that they approach the Cummings Foundation, which focuses on this specific district, I mean, county, that they offer grants. They are giving away $20 million to 100 nonprofit schools, are included in that number every year. So you can submit grant applications to them for trips, for example, and that helps reduce some of that cost.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I guess we have this under the consent agenda, but I think normally we would approve it as a new trip separately, right? So do you want to have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just a clarification. Are we approving both or just the Puerto Rican?
Just the Puerto Rico trip.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, unanimous. Thank you. All right, public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment tonight? No? All right, so meet the new administration. Dr. Bodie, do you want to take it from here?
Yes, well, I would like, first on the list we have is actually Mr. John Bowler, who is our new athletic director as of this summer. And he is not someone who's new to the Arlington Public Schools, as he's been a very beloved and successful boys' basketball coach over these years and has worked at the Boys and Girls Club. So this was an opportunity for him to talk a little bit about his experience so far and to have you have an opportunity to ask some questions.
Hi, how's everyone doing today?
Good, great.
Good, yeah, so, you know, I mean, it's John Bowler. I graduated from Arlington High in 1993, so, and I've been, you know, fortunate to coach here as well, so I think I have a perspective where I was a student athlete here and a co-chair. You know, and I was fortunate enough to work for the Boys and Girls Club for 21 years, a place that I loved and enjoyed going to work every day, and this is the only place I would have left it for, because I, you know, love Arlington High School, I love this community, and to have an opportunity to, as a basketball coach, you know, I loved working with my student athletes, but to have a, be able to have a bigger impact on the whole student body and all the student athletes and all the sports was something I just couldn't pass up. You know, it's just, it's a privilege to be the athletic director at Arlington High School, and I plan to be here for a very long time. You know, short-term, you know, I've just been, you know, trying to learn as much as possible, trying to learn all my fall coaches, you know, their coaching styles, you know, learning, you know, you know, the school's been great, the maintenance, custodial, the administration team, students, coaches, and my staff, you know, are all very helpful if I have questions. So it's been, you know, just learning as much as I can, you know, I think each season will be a different kind of animal, with the fall, the winter, and spring, and so, you know, I'm hoping this year, just to do a full, you know, assessment of, you know, what's been kind of, what's been going on this year and the past years, and try to, you know, see what will be best for the student athletes in the school and the community. You know, I think it's, we have great coaches and they all have different styles, and I've been going out to practices and games and, you know, watching them coach, watching them in practice, and I want to bring, you know, you know, all their coaching styles and maybe introduce them to different sports, to give other coaches different styles that could work for them. You know, but I think it's been, you know, a great experience so far and, you know, also short-term, long-term, is trying to figure out when we lose gym space like the Blue Gym and the pit, you know, trying to figure out where we're going to have those sports play and go. I've been talking to, you know, Winchester AD and Belmont, because they're kind of going through similar, Winchester went through a similar thing, Belmont's going through something right now, so, and working with a lot of Bill McCarthy about, you know, figuring out, you know, where we can play when different gyms are taken away or fields are taken away. So I think that's what I'm, you know, focused on a little, you know, long-term as well, trying to figure out what's the best for our student athletes, you know, where they can play and how we can, you know, not disrupt them as much as we can during the, you know, the building process.
Great, questions? Ms. Seuss, go ahead.
So actually, not a question, but so I, one of the things I did this summer is looked over our policies.
Yep.
Which I've been on school committee for a while, I should have read them earlier, but they changed and so they, anyway. I did read them earlier, but then they changed again. So one of the things that was mentioned there is that yearly, that the school committee will look, see a report on improvement needs of the various athletic facilities and conditions and needs of fields, rings, courts, et cetera, associated amenities. I suspect that every athletic director has given such a report to the superintendent, but just sort of to talk about it, I think, to put the bug in your ear, I think that's really helpful to come to the school committee because we handle budgets.
Yep.
So just sort of throwing that out there. This is sort of an end-of-the-year type of thing?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yep.
So as you assess what you need for next year and what the next budgetary process.
Yep, yeah, you know, that's why, you know, I'll definitely look into that and, you know, we'll, you know, as, you know, we go through each season, I'll, you know, I'll definitely keep track of, you know, what we need and, you know, what we, you had to spend money on, you know, for our facilities.
Mr. Haner?
I don't know if you had an opportunity, I was fortunate enough, and I'm sure the building committee's been dealing with this, to look at Billerica as a new high school, and the assistant principal that was taking us around was very involved in the athletic aspects, so he was showing off the gyms, the training rooms and things of that nature. If you haven't had a chance to take a look at it, he'll give you the tour for free.
Mr. Brooks, the Mr. Brooks?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Brooks was my JV basketball coach when I went to his school. I plan on going up there because I've seen pictures of their facility.
It is, it is really something to see. I mean, I'm sure the building committee's working on it and stuff like that, but it's well-thought-out, well-planned, and there's a lot of community involved in it. They have the walking track, something that we're looking at, and so it's exciting. I just wanted to share that with you. You've got the connection already.
Yep.
So, it's great.
Mr. Shippin?
Yeah, I sort of second Mr. Haner's remarks, and we're really going to rely on everybody who has content area-specific knowledge to lend their expertise as the building is being designed and we're looking at how we're going to equip it. And I think that the athletics and phys ed are really enough of a specialty that your expertise is going to be very valuable. I just, looking at what we're going to be going through in the next three or four years in terms of demolishing this building and building a new building around this plan, and I am thankful that you're looking toward that because that's going to be a bear of a job. And keep us apprised of what you might need from us in terms of additional support through the process, because I'm sure you're, you know, you're going to need our help.
Definitely, definitely, definitely. Yeah, I'll keep you updated on everything that's going on.
Well, I was just going to say that Mr. Bowler has been really involved, he's sort of jumped into the deep end of the swimming pool this summer, because we've had a number of meetings about fields and turf, and so he, I just want to assure you that he's very involved in all of these discussions about phasing and where we're going to have to go, and it's a, it's a lot for a new, moving into a position that's as complicated and is a position, and having this at the same time. I have to commend him for all the work he's done to help us out so far and more to come.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Allison Mappi?
Another thing to put on your to-do list, which I'm sure at this point is quite lengthy, there has been interest in revisiting athletic fees and how to structure them, how to ensure fairness, equity, maybe decrease the, I mean, there are always parents, many parents, who feel that they are too high, and they are some of the highest in the Middlesex League, if not the highest. And the problem, it's been kind of under discussion to be looked at and has stalled the past two years for, because we've been changing athletic directors, but that is something that we would be interested in doing, I mean, in taking up when you feel ready. I know...
Yeah, I think, like, I'm, you know, in the next, in October sometime, I'm going to meet with Michael, and he's actually outlined some different ways we can do user fees and different, of what other schools kind of around here have done, and so we're just, we're, I'm going to meet with him, we're going to look at and see what we think, you know, the best step will be for like, you know, for Arlington to look at in the future. But I'll definitely, you know, I can show you those numbers when I meet with him.
Okay, great, thank you.
So just an additional comment on that. So I think previously we had looked at it as revenue-neutral, but we did have the override, we have a little bit more flexibility on budget. So I think as you take a look at it, you know, keep an open mind for the possibility that there might be a slight reduction in revenue or something, that we can certainly consider that in our budget process, but we need to know that sort of by January.
Okay.
So there is a time, time limit on that. I think the previous second, not the media predecessor, but the one before that, had gotten pretty far on a proposal, maybe even maybe documents around with a proposal, to sort of collapse it into maybe two categories. I think there definitely is, you know, some sensitivity to the very high fees, but there's also sensitivity on the low end of not having, you know, cross-country subsidize the other sports. So, big puzzle, lot to look at, but it's certainly something we would be interested in seeing sooner if possible.
So one thing actually that didn't happen, just because of all the craziness, is community outreach didn't happen, so I know that... outreach didn't happen, so I know that it's a issue of great anxiety to some community members, and just to make sure that you sort of hear everyone's concerns and perspectives before any decisions get made or even before you even come to us potentially.
Yep.
Just, I think people have a lot to say about this issue.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
But you coached my son at the Boys and Girls Club a long time ago, so.
Okay.
Not a long time ago, but 10 years, maybe six or seven years ago, so, it would, great, I was very excited to have you come over here and welcome to Arlington.
Thank you, thank you.
Welcome back to Arlington.
Thank you, yeah, I'm, you know, very excited to be here. Like, like I said, like, you know, with my, when I coached basketball, I, you know, I could affect 45 kids, you know, during a season, but, you know, being able to do more, I think, is, you know, what my family always tells me to do, and, you know, it's how I grew up, and I just think it's a great opportunity to have an impact on, you know, more, more student athletes in Arlington High School.
Great.
I'm sure you know this, you've heard this a lot, but, you know, since you were hired, there's been tremendous comments that I've been receiving about how thrilled the community is to have you in this position, and I hope you're able to enjoy it and serve for a long time.
Thank you, I hope, I mean, this is, this is the last job I ever want to have, so.
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
Great, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, we had, Mr. Bowler has to run off to something else, so, at any rate.
I'm sure there's some sport someplace.
Oh, always, always, yes.
Thank you.
So, I would like to introduce to you our new director of science, Sam Hoya, who, come on up, and maybe Sarah Huber, who is our?
Team.
They're a team, they have been a team quite a bit already.
A whole month and a half, so, we are quite the team.
Well, they've done a lot of work in the last month and a half together.
We have, she is amazing and I'm so lucky to have her, so, thank you very much for, for allowing me to have a science coach, because I don't know how I would do this job without her, so, thank you very much, I really appreciate it, and.
Sarah comes as a high school teacher, a little bit of a middle school, and so, having Sarah Huber with her is terrific, because they really balance each other out in terms of their content and knowledge and experience.
Like a power team.
Power team, power team. Well, you came off as a power team the other day at the elementary principals meeting too, so, that's great. So, we're here tonight to welcome you, but also to have you talk a little bit about, you know, you know, yourselves and, you know, what you, where you are right now in the process of, of this work.
Would you like to go first, or?
Sure. All right. So, I'm just elementary, elementary science coach, and I'm coming from the Needham Public Schools, so, in Needham they have what they call the elementary, the Science Center, which serves curriculum and programming for K through five elementary, and so, and it was, it was a great job, but I was so glad to have a job here in Arlington, and this is, this is where I'm from, Arlington, so, which is very nice to have potentially a similar position here in Arlington in the elementary system.
So, I'm Sam Hoya, and I come from the Rockland Public School System on the South Shore, it's a very small community, but it was a great place to kind of learn how to be a teacher and learn how to be an educator and a leader, and I was there for about 15 years, and I, I'm finishing up my dissertation, which is around gender identity and how gender expansive youth experience education, and finishing that up and really kind of becoming a leader, I kind of tried to branch out a little bit, and the Arlington job came up, and I have a friend who is from the Arlington area, and she was like, you need to go here, like, this would be an ideal fit for you. And I was like, I don't know, like, no, 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 go. All right. And as soon as I met with the hiring committee, I was like, I want this job. I met, you know, everybody, and I was like, I belong here, and I hadn't felt that way since I started in Rockland, so I knew that this is really where I wanted to be and what I wanted to do, and so, I was very thankful that the stars aligned and here I am. But we've really kind of been working on looking at, at the elementary level, looking at the curriculum that we have, which is FOS, which is a great curriculum, but it's very in-depth, and so, what we're trying to do is, we are trying to create an equitable experience across all seven elementary schools, and to do that, we are working on essential standards and pulling out the essential pieces that everybody needs to cover, so that as our, you know, students go through the elementary schools, they're able to come out and go into the Gibbs with an equitable experience. So, that's really kind of what we've been working on, as well as common assessments. We're creating a set of common assessments, again, to help drive instruction, and our goal is that at the end of each unit, teachers will get together, they will assess themselves, they'll assess each other as a school, and then we will use that data to assess us as a district and kind of look to see, what are we doing well, what are we not doing well, what, how can we use all of this information to help move us forward as a, as a group, not as a school, but as a district. So, that's kind of what we've been working on there. At the middle school, where we've just implemented the iScience curriculum, and so, really kind of working out, how does iScience fit with our new standards, and how do we get everyone on board with this whole new curriculum, because it's terrifying whenever you're, you're told as a teacher, here, you have this new stuff to do, and you're like, yeah, but I liked my old stuff, oh, let me go back. So, really kind of working with each other and really kind of working six through eight to see where we're at, again, as a middle school, not as the Gibbs, not as the Edison, but as an entire middle school. And then, the high school is, is amazing, and it's doing so many great things, and there are so many great classes, and I'm just trying to get into different types of classes with different teachers to see what it is that everyone's doing here and kind of learning for the high school. So, it's kind of where we've been at for the last six weeks or so.
Intense.
Like camping. Yes.
Great, so, questions? Mr. Shippman?
I'm glad you're thrilled to be here, I mean, the enthusiasm is just thrilling. And again, the setup is the same thing, you know, first of all, I'm really interested in hearing later on how your, your evaluation, your unit evaluations are going, because I like the thought of the reflective practices being sort of the heart and soul of what you're doing.
Mm-hmm.
And that science is a great place for kids to do performance-based stuff and to really get out of the books and the paper and to embrace the kits and the hands-on and the worms and the, what was smelling up my second-grade classrooms a couple of years ago?
Crayfish?
We had crayfish, we also had something else that smelled even worse, but.
Frogs.
No, no, there, there's some bug things, silkworms.
Ah.
Oh, the silkworms, oh, those smell putrid. But it was a beautiful thing, and the kids loved them. But again, the other thing is, I don't know what Rockland's High School looked like, or how you're looking at our science classrooms at the pillars in, in the middle, but again, you're, be always thinking from now through the next couple of years of, especially this year, which is heavy in the planning stage, of what you want science classrooms to look like.
So, I'm actually, I'm coming off a building project.
Ah, great.
So, I'm coming off a building project and onto another one, so I'm really excited about it. I was like, you know what, where, where could I go that there's another building project? Because that was the easiest five years of my life, let's go. So, you know, when I found out there was a building project on top of everything else, I was like, no, no, this is it, this is, this is going to be my new home.
You could, you could be around the demolition work, you know, that's, that's a great size. But really, the fact is, it's so thrilling to be able to have an influence on what the physical plant and what we have to work with is going to be going on for years and years and years, and again, I hope you're here to enjoy it for, for the long term.
Me too, I'm just going to keep looking at them and.
We hire them, so.
All right, so I'll keep looking at you guys then.
Mr. Hayner.
Being the oldest one on the committee, I was fortunate enough in the 50s, when science was brought into the public schools and everything, and the enthusiasm of teachers, although something new can be frightening, and I was a teacher myself, it's exciting to do things new, and you're showing this enthusiasm, both of you, and I'm excited for our students. Robotics, both in the, my two grandsons, one's in the fourth grade, one's in the eighth grade, they're two different school systems, but they're both actively involved in it, and it's exciting, the stretching and stuff. One thinks he's going to take over the world with AI and things of that nature, but we haven't told him yet, he's not, but that's okay.
You never know.
Is there, is there plans for that at all levels? I can remember doing the Lego with, right, with the turtles and stuff and the dark wiring, it disappeared for a while, is it back or is it?
So, I'm not exactly sure, I know that at the elementary level, right now, we're focusing solely on content.
Okay.
But it is our goal over the next, probably not this year, because right now we're just focusing on the curriculum aspect, but our plan is to incorporate a tech piece, I don't know if that would be robotics or if it would be some sort of engineering kind of course or section or unit, but we haven't really talked about that here, and then at the high school, I think they do robotics.
There's, there's a club, I think, isn't there?
There's a course, I thought there was a class, but that, that doesn't fall under my purview as it stands right now.
I think when the, for a lot of kids, when you get to do the hands-on and get an actual chance of taking the thinking piece and making it real, and it, it internalizes so quickly.
Absolutely.
All the units have some kind of, in elementary, or I'm sure across the board, have, like, an engineering design piece to each of the units, each of the units will culminate in something that's, that they have to think it through, design and build, it's not, it's different for each unit what it is exactly, but, and I think the robotics has been at the elementary level, an after-school program in the past, but it's, that's an addition, yeah.
Ms. Seuss?
Yes, so I'm, we are very excited to have you, and I think the community is very excited that there's more love being given to science in terms of sort of hours, you know, FTE hours, so I think that's really exciting. I have a couple of questions, one is, one of the questions I've heard about at the elementary level is that there aren't enough FOS kits, and so, that means that teachers can't all teach the same thing, I know they're very expensive, but I don't know if there's sort of a long-term plan to maybe have enough for each classroom, or if we just think that's just too expensive and not worth it.
So, right, yes.
Yes.
Yes. This is something that we're kind of talking about, and we really kind of want to get through this year. We have talked about possibly taking all of the kits and having them stored in a central location, and that we will say, these three schools will do, first grade will do this kit at this time, so that everybody can do it at the same time in those three schools, and then this set of schools will do this, that's something we've kind of played around with.
Yeah, that's innovative, yeah.
Looking at whether or not the, you know, the essential standard pieces that we're doing right now work, then we can possibly buy more pieces of equipment just for those lessons that they'll be doing, and that's going to be far more economical than buying whole kits.
Right.
If we're not using every single piece in the kit. So, it's going to really depend at the end of this year what teachers decide that they want. Some teachers, I know, I was at Stratton, and one fifth-grade teacher teaches all of the life science, and so, the kids rotate amongst teachers, but I've been to other schools where they're like, nope, one teacher teaches all three, and I don't want to dictate to teachers how they should teach either, so it's going to be really dependent upon how, how they want to go moving forward.
Good, I'm glad, I'm glad you're thinking about it. The other question I have, so my dad was a chemistry teacher and then an AP science guy, and he was talking, and this makes so much sense, I hadn't thought of it, that there's a movement to switch chemistry and biology, because, you know, biology is so much chemistry, wasn't true the way biology was taught 30 years ago, I was wondering what you think about that.
So, yeah, so, great questions.
Other politics.
I know, I'd be very careful if my bio-teachers hear me, they might come to a coup tomorrow. It does make sense. The question then becomes the math component.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So, in my last district, we did biology first, so it was biochemistry then physics, because mathematically that makes sense.
Right.
In an ideal world, we would teach physics first.
Right.
And then we would teach chemistry and then biology exactly, because physics dictates chemistry, chemistry dictates biology, but then when you try to put in the math piece, then it becomes a whole can of worms, because yes, you can do physics conceptually, but to truly understand physics.
Right.
You need to have trigonometry, but you don't get trigonometry until, you know, junior year. So, in theory, yes, that would be the best way to teach science, it's probably not going to be one that we will move towards anytime soon. Ideally, my big push is going to be to have more students take physics. Right now, all of our kids take physical science, which is like this introductory physics course, very conceptual, which is great, but then, you know, this year I only have 100 kids out of the entire building taking physics, and that includes honors physics and AP, and I truly believe that all kids need physics, they need a higher-level physics, because it teaches them how to think, and it teaches them how to look at a problem and really kind of go at the problem and say, okay, how do I solve this? Okay, I need to write down all of my givens, and I need to draw a picture, and I need to understand what's happening, and I need to do all of these steps, whereas a lot of times, I know I'm, I'm, I do this all the time, I just want the answer, I don't want to have to think through the process, but taking physics, even though you're not going to be a physicist, will help you kind of look at a problem and say, this is how I have to go about solving it. So, my push is really going to be to get kids to take more physics, and it's hard when you have a school that's, like this one, that's so great, that has so many course offerings.
There's so many amazing courses in senior year, I have to say.
Exactly, exactly, there are so many awesome things that you can do.
It is really hard for kids to choose, yes, yeah.
And it's like, how do you tell kids, no, don't take this really awesome course, because I want you to take this one, right? So, yeah, it's, it's a thought, the other things that, you know, Dr. Jangor and I have kind of like talked about in passing, about course programming and things like that, that we're kind of thinking about.
Good, thanks.
Ms. Morgan?
We're a family of scientists as well, so, I love science, I think it's like magic but real. So, echoing what Ms. Seuss said about the FOS kit, sounds, I have three elementary-age students, I have a couple of fifth graders, been in elementary school a long time, so much discussion about those kits, was on the PTO, they were always coming asking us for money for the kits, which, like, is weird, right, like, we got to just do better. This was obviously all under, like, predecessors of yours, but that's the, the climate is one where I'm like all set talking about them, we need to make sure that they're, you know, that your idea of having them centrally located sounds great, I hope you'll also look at, you know, my kids last year in fourth grade were at Stratton, they had the experience of having three different teachers for science, you know, I, you know, I hope that as you guys talk about this, this is something that you're actively engaging with teachers about, I'm all for people teaching their subject area that they're interested in, at the same time, there's like a pretty high ramp-up time for a new teacher with a new classroom, and we do lots of responsive classroom stuff at Stratton, which is very time-consuming, and I felt like it really cut into their time to actually do science, because there was a big ramp-up each time we changed teachers, and so, there was this whole process, and I felt like they did lots of like responsive classroom in science time with new teachers, but not that much science. So, I hope that you guys talk about that, it maybe is working great, I don't know, they may be getting more out of it than I saw as a parent at home, but I hope it's something that, you know, continues to be part of the conversation, and then, you know, I, my understanding is, is that the, the, the physical science happening freshman year is driven a lot by the MCAS, that they need some of that material to take their science MCAS, which is too bad, because I think it does drive the, the sequencing a little bit, and then we. bit, and then we, we lose them. And I, I work in higher ed with students who are not typically high-achieving academic students, and we get them in math classes, and they would really have benefited from taking physics. They didn't need AP physics in high school, they really didn't. Like, they would have benefited from just physics that wasn't, and, and we can't do that in ninth grade. They don't have the math background, most of them, many of them haven't finished Algebra I, right? By the time they're in ninth grade. So you can't have a robust physics class until you get them through some higher-level math. So, you know, I hope that those, it sounds like those are conversations that you guys are engaging in, and I'm really excited about that, and thinking about those opportunities, especially for the kind of students that I see later on in their educational career, who are not academically, like, we are an open enrollment institution, these are not academically strong students, but they would really have benefited from having some more exposure to a little bit more robust science, where they would have been required to use some of their math skills. So I think that that's really exciting, and I love that you guys are asking those questions.
And I think moving forward, you know, Matt Coleman, who's the math director, and I are really planning on sitting down and kind of looking at our curriculums and trying to align them horizontally a little bit as well, to see how we can help each other. Because I, a lot of times, when I was a teacher, I saw this, that kids can look at a graph in math class, and they're like, yeah, this is an X-Y graph, and this is great. And then you give them the same exact graph in physics, and they're like, I've never seen this before. What is this? What is this graph thing which you talk of? And really kind of, you know, putting physics examples in math class, or math examples in physics class, and really kind of working together, you know, because math and science really do go hand-in-hand so well. And really kind of working with each other to, to kind of get those skills up across the board.
Two other quick things. One, when I was a math teacher, high school math teacher, we aligned our curriculum specifically to support the science. So that we rearranged units and taught this early, taught, moved things back, in order to align with what was going on the science side. And that's really an important thing. The other thing, in terms of the, where to teach biology versus chemistry thing, now I, I struggled with biology in high school, and I adored chemistry, so I have a bias.
I do as well.
But, the, the one thing is, when you have a population of second language learners, biology is the most difficult, because it's most language-intensive.
Correct.
So that just in terms of being aware of the number of second language learners we service here in Arlington, to have that in, in the back of everybody's mind as we're looking in terms of sequencing.
Right, no, exactly. And that's something that I think about in terms of not only our English language learners, but also in terms of our special education students who, you know, many of them with language disabilities struggle with the bio, because it is, you're learning two languages simultaneously. So these are things that I think we can help mediate with support and scaffolding, and, you know, just kind of working as, as teams, instead of, you know, as individual islands.
Maybe it's not one-size-fits-all, maybe we don't put everybody through biology first.
Where you going to put them?
Some go to chemistry first, and then do biology later. You know, they're not necessarily linear sequential. So that, to lock in the whole school to do it in the same order is, if we can find a way to have that flexibility of course selections, wouldn't be a bad way to think about it as well.
No, I, I think, I think that that's definitely something we can talk about. I think that that's going to be a cultural shift that happens to happen within the community. I think, you know, oftentimes we're locked into this idea of, well, ninth graders take physical science, and 10th graders take biology, and 11th graders take chemistry. And what do you mean, you want my ninth grader to take, you know, chemistry, or, or my 10th grader to take physical science that's a freshman class? Like, so I think we have to kind of break out of that a little bit, and really kind of explain to the community and get the community involved in understanding that, you're right, chemistry is its own year-long course, and yes, it reaches out into the others, but it can be taught as a, as a self-contained unit. Same with bio, same with physics. It's not like math or English, which kind of build on the skills that you learn from one to the other as much.
It's hard to read.
But definitely do something to, to kind of think about. It, it's something that I'm thinking about in terms of some of our students who have historically struggled with MCAS, and maybe having them do biology first, because it gives them more opportunities to, to take the test, because the retake is only offered in biology. So, you know, if, if you take physical science as a freshman and you fail, then you have to wait until the following June to take another MCAS. Whereas if you take the bio one first, then you could retake in February. It just gives you more opportunities. Something that we're kind of looking at, and, you know, special education and I kind of started that conversation the other day, and talking about how do we help those students, and then looking at the larger population and saying, how do we help the students that have historically not done as well? So.
And a new building is a good opportunity to break old ways.
Ms. Keys, go ahead.
Hi, I just want to say, our teachers are over the moon with Samantha. They are so excited, they feel supported, they feel encouraged, they feel refreshed, and I think this is a great fit for Arlington.
Thank you very much. Who is your friend that we need to like? She, her friend is the one, you have a friend who like sent you here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you should leave their name and number with.
We'll send them some.
Gift basket.
Some, some nice things. Some swag.
Mr. Spiegel will do the recruiting gift.
We have hats, right?
I will say, Dr. McNeil and I went to Rockland High School on a site visit and met with Sam's colleagues, former colleagues and students, and they could not say enough great things about her, and about what a loss she was going to be. They were a little upset that we were taking her away from Rock, I mean, more than a little upset, but, but they understood that she was, you know, had a great opportunity here, and were very, I mean, the way Julie just spoke about how the teachers, that's how the teachers there spoke about her as well, so.
Excellent.
All right, my, my turn. So, so, welcome, we're glad, we're glad to have you. One of, one of the, one of my concerns over the years is that when you, you know, MCAS is certainly not everything, but it's the one measure we have right now, you know, fortunately you have your own assessments that you're going to be piloting, but for now, all we have is MCAS. And historically, Arlington as a district has done much poorer on MCAS than it has in the other areas.
In science.
In science, yes, sorry. So just looking at the scores that were just released, we haven't really gotten the report on it yet, but it looks like we actually had a jump in performance this year, particularly at the high school. So that's good, so we're making progress. But I just wanted to first make sure you're aware of that concern, and see if, you know, if you have any ideas of, you know, why that might be, or, you know, maybe it's at the start of the elementary school, is it, you know, any initial ideas of, of ways to tackle that?
Yeah, I mean, I think historically, looking at different districts, you see districts perform much higher in ELA in math than in science. And I think a lot of that has to do with the type of test it is. In ELA and in math, they're very much skills-based, whereas in science, it's very much content-based. And so it's really, it's very hard to be able to say, well, in math and ELA, they do better than science. Well, it's like apples and oranges. You can't compare the two, you can't compare content and, and skills. Those are two very different things. And so.
Right, it's a, just to clarify, if you, if you rank the districts by MCAS score, Arlington would be like maybe in the 30, 40s.
Gotcha.
In ELA and in math, but much further down in science, in the 50s or lower in science. So clearly, as a district, we're doing really well in ELA and math, in science, we weren't. I think it went up this year, I haven't seen the rankings, I think, I think we did go up this year, but that's just something that was out of whack.
So I, I think that does have some things to do, you know, we spend the majority of the day on EL, in elementary schools, on ELA and on math, right? And there's very little time for science and social studies, and even when there is that time, it's often cut into for other things. And so I think that that does play a huge role, and then by the time you get to sixth grade, when they're starting to get science every day, now sixth-grade teachers are playing catch-up from a lot of the elementaries. And we're hoping that by standardizing our curriculum, that that will help.
Yeah.
And really kind of doing different types of learning as well. The other initiative that we have is PBL, so trying to do some project-based learning in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, primarily, and then moving it to the high school after that, to really kind of bring that intrinsic extrinsic motivation to learning, which I think will also play a huge role.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, it was a pleasure being here, thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
You too.
She wants, you want to switch that?
She's not here.
Yeah, oh yeah, but we just.
There must be a window open.
Do you want to, you want to switch that?
She's still here.
Yeah, oh yeah, but we just.
Oh, woman, yeah.
This will be part one of a two-part presentation. I will return on October 24th with Paul O'Sullivan, who is our district data specialist, and we'll delve more deeply into our subgroup results, and compare them to how we're doing overall as an aggregate. So today's report. It's not, I'll turn it on. Karen.
What?
It's in there.
Yeah, it's not.
There it is. So our objectives for today's presentation, we'll look at, we'll review what the next-generation achievement levels are, because I did switch from the legacy MCAS. We'll, again, define student growth percentile, because we will be looking at some charts showing our student growth percentile. We'll look at what's new for the 2019 accountability reporting system, there were some changes. And then we'll look at our accountability levels at the district, and at each individual school. And then we'll look across the district at our grade-level performance. We're not going to get into the subgroup data, as I mentioned before, we'll look at that when I come back on part two on October 24th. And then I'll entertain questions and comments. So these are our next-generation achievement levels. We've also received our parent reports, which will be going out next week, and you see the different levels. There's exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, and not meeting expectations. So that's what the students, those are the results as they, for when they take the ELA, the math. And then in some cases, in the science, and we'll look at, like, in what areas, in what grades they gave the next-generation science, and what grades they were still taking the legacy MCAS for science. Student growth percentiles, so they're using this in order to show student growth from year to year, and they use, they compare students who have a similar MCAS history, scoring history, and so they look at that, they look at those cohort of students, and they see how they perform from year to year, and then they give them a percentile of growth. And you can ask questions along the way, so if, yes.
Is there an issue using this comparison between the two different types, the next-generation and the legacy?
No. They, they've, in certain tests, where they've given the next-generation, they've found a way to formulate an algorithm for.
So the, the comparison is valid?
Yes.
Thank you.
So what's new for the 2019 accountability? We're looking at the various things that they use for expanded advanced coursework, which is, you'll see in the scoring reports, as part of our accountability at the high school level, they use that in order to give you additional points. Participation rate calculation, the subgroup participation rates are calculated for all subjects combined, all students' rates, all students' rate remains calculated separately by subject. They're using two years of data, so when I show the targeted, the criterion reference target percentages, they're from 2018 and 2019, and you're looking at the improvement that has taken place. So every year they set targets, and so you receive points in various categories for meeting those targets or not meeting those targets. And then they look at the targeted percentages, and they weight them, in order to come up with your 2019 accountability rating. So for 2018, they weighted it 40%, and then they weight the 2019 performance 60%. And then they've added, they've restructured the categories. Last year, there were three categories, there was not meeting, partially meeting, and meeting or exceeding. And so this year, and I'll go to the next slide to show this, so based upon your target, criterion reference target percentages, these are the percentage bands. If you look at them, you'll see at the bottom, if it's limited or no progress, you, that's, you receive zero to 24% of the points, the percentage of the target percentage. And then if you look at the moderate, moderate progress, you would have scored between 25 and 49%. Substantial progress, you score between 50 and 74%, and meeting or exceeding target percentage is 75% to 100. Any questions? And again, this is a weighted average between 2018 and 2019. So we're going to get into the accountability ratings that we received as a district and each individual school. So these are our public, I want to let our viewers know that all the results for the MCAS, they were embargoed up until a couple of weeks ago, but now they're, you've probably been reading in the paper, they're now public, so our, you know, you can go onto the Massachusetts or onto DESI's website, and you can review the results. So as we look at our accountability status, you'll see it's pretty consistent across the district. At the top, you'll see Arlington as a district, we received substantial progress, and we, which is replicated in all the individual, now, these are the non-high school, high schools, so these are our elementary schools, so this is what their status is. And, and you'll see, it correlates to those percentage points that I referred to in the previous slide. These are secondary schools, Gibbs, Addison, and Arlington. And I will say, without going to each individual report, because if I did, we'd be here for a while, and I can't get into it in part two, but we did see, you know, some movement, some increases in our, the way that we, our target percentage for 2019, and because it's weighted, some of our schools have performed a lot better than they did last year. Yes?
Just a really quick question. Did they just, to do the Gibbs target, did they just yank the sixth graders out of the Addison data from last year?
Right, because we had, we had the sixth, we had their.
No, I understand that. I just want, like, I just, so you just took, you just compared it to the last year's sixth grade.
Correct.
At the Addison, and pulled them out, and now the, is the Addison reference target 72% of last, well, two school years ago, just seventh and eighth graders? Or was it six, seven, and eight?
Two, in 2017, it was six, seventh, and eighth, 2018.
It was seven and eight.
It was six, seventh, and eighth. So you're looking, so this is, so when you think.
But this is the 19, right, so.
You're looking at the spring of 2019.
Yep.
So you have to go back by spring. So in 2019-
Yep.
Gibbs came online, was opened up, right, okay.
I just, so I just wanted to make sure that the, that, because these are reference targets that are comparing to past performance, right?
Correct.
So it's just, it's comparing to past seventh and eighth grade Addison students, that 2019 number.
Yes. Yes. So 2017 would have been the first year that they introduced the next generation MCAS.
Got it.
So that was the benchmark. So then they took, so every year, they compared to the previous year, and that's how you receive your points.
Right.
And they set targets, so you have to either meet or exceed those targets. You get points for meeting those targets as an aggregate, and in each subgroup.
Right. I guess I'm just saying is that this is the first year that we've seen the sixth grade pulled out.
Correct. This is the first-
Which is interesting, I mean, yeah, right? It's, I mean, it's good. I just was, I was trying to compare it to what we've seen historically for Addison, but also realizing that it's a different population.
Right. They're, they're, they have their own school. So you want to see what the impact that may be. I hear you.
Yeah.
I understand.
Thank you.
So 2019 would have been the first year that our sixth graders at Gibbs took the MCAS.
And it would be the first year that we would be seeing the sixth grade MCAS scores being pulled out with this kind of data, because it used to be they were all locked together at the Addison.
Correct.
Oh, so I was going to ask this later, but, but what is the impetus for the weighted average? Is it, is it districts feeling like they were being unfairly evaluated, going up and down, or sort of what, why are we, why are they doing that now?
So I think that what they're trying to do is they're trying to get everyone to really focus on, you know, decreasing the achievement gap. And so they're really focused on the improvement. They've, they've changed a lot of the scoring. So, you know, now it's like the lowest 25 percentile. So a lot of that has to do, so I think, overall, they're trying to find a way to have us look at our, you know, our lowest 25%. And they're trying to say, we're going to, we're going to set these targets, and then we're going to really, we're going to reward you for any type of improvement that you receive. And that's why I think they put more weight on your current year's percentage, because they take your current year-
Right, but we didn't have, we didn't have any weighted average before, right? It was just year to year. So the, so the difference is that it's a two-year average now rather than just a one-year. Isn't that the difference?
Correct.
So-
No, it's, it's-
Oh, okay.
So, let me, can you state your question again?
Oh, so, so I was assuming that we're always, that in past, we were always comparing it year to year.
Starting in-
Now, it seems like there's a difference that we're comparing in this two-year period.
Starting in 2017, when they introduced the next generation MCAS. They, then they introduced in 2018, a new accountability system for looking at it. So they're really, so they compared your 2,000 performance was your benchmark. That was your benchmark performance, because that's the first year of the next generation in some, in some grades, from K through five. And after, when you think about this, as I look at the middle school, and you'll see that. So you'll, so they looked at the performance in 2017, and then you, you received your two, your results in 2018.
Right.
And then they set targets for your 2018. So you receive points.
Right.
So you got a targeted percentage, a criterion reference targeted percentage for 2018. And then in 2019, it is a weighted average. I don't, I have to look back-
That was the question, is why, why there's a change?
Point of order, or whatever. Under the old accountability system, it was weighted four years. It was 40% for the most current, 30, 20, 10.
Okay, so the weighting is not new?
So the weighting system across years is not new, because they wanted to even things out, so that if you had a particularly good cohort or a bad cohort going through, particularly for a smaller school, it wouldn't have such an impact. They were looking for stability and consistency. However, what happened, when we went off the old MCAS and we split between electronic testing and PARC versus legacy MCAS, everything fell apart. So they had to reconstitute the accountability system. And last year was the first year of common measures that were able to be used under the new system. So that was a one-year thing. And it's going, as we go out for four years, it will return to a 40, 30, 20, 10.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Thank you for that. And they also did this in order to, because some schools didn't have the subgroups. So before, it was like, you're looking, so you were actually rewarded for not having subgroups. So you might have some students that didn't, you didn't have like students with disabilities. So by just looking at the lowest 25 percentile, that was another reason why they changed accountability system. So they're now, they're saying, oh, you still have a low 25 percentile. They just might not all fall into a particular subgroup. So now we're looking at across the board, the lowest 25 percentile. So they're trying to ensure that we're still focusing on that achievement gap. All right? And that's a way of like leveling it off across-
Actually, I know, I know parents who are very excited by that, because they felt they were being overlooked before, because they didn't fit into a category. So, yeah.
But it also rewarded those student, those schools that didn't have the subgroup population.
Right.
And so even though they were reporting that they were doing very well, they were, you still had to look at, so how is your lowest 25% doing? So I hope I explained that. And thank you, Mr. Schlipman, for adding that.
And I just point out, for Arlington High School, if you don't look at the weighted average at 55, you went from 38% to 67%.
Correct. And so that's where you see the marketed improvement. So, I'm sorry, I skipped a slide.
And the Gibbs will never have a bottom 25, because you have to be in the same school for two years in order to have that.
Oh, but it's not just taking the sixth graders from-
No, no, the lower 25 calculation is a school-based population. So they're going to look at the, the bottom 25% in your previous year and see how they did in the subsequent year. But nobody at the Gibbs was at the Gibbs the previous year. So that, you know, under the oddities of the system, you won't have that.
Understood. They were somewhere. They were just down the road.
So looking at, moving on, we're going to look at our district ELA results. And so we're going to, the way that I structured the, the charts, as you'll see, is that we're looking at them, and because I felt, in conferring with Paula O'Sullivan, our district data specialist, we felt that this was the best way to show the results, so you can see a comparison from year to year. So if you look at the chart, you'll see that, starting in 2017, because that's the first year of the next generation MCAS for grade three, that you'll see that you can now, you can compare on the chart, meeting and exceeding. So I just have on the chart here, meeting and exceeding. The blue is meeting, and the green is exceeding. So then you can, I, we teased out the percentage of students that were exceeding, and the percentage of students that are meeting. And so you can compare, just by looking at the chart, from year to year. And also, you can compare our performance in 2019 to the state. So just looking at this, and some of the things that jump out is that you'll see that in various grades, you'll see that we've kind of maintained from year to year, starting, especially in 2008, when I look at 2018 and 2019. And then some of that has to do with, like, and I tried to think about and reflect upon where we were curriculum-wise. So in grade three, and grade five, in the last couple of years, we've, you know, introduced new units of study in the, in the workshop model for reading. And so you see that, you'll see a, a jump in grade three. As you look at the performance in the 2019 as a district, you see we, there was a marketed improvement. And then as, as you look at grade four, again, as we look at the professional development and the, and the focus with the coaches, you know, you know, we probably, we, we focus more on grade three and grade five. So, you know, we have to go back and look at those various grades and see how we can continue to show improvement as we are, have adopted the new units of study. Any questions? On this particular, yes?
So the, the white part, all the way to 100, are the students who are not meeting?
I'm sorry, no, no, I, that is not true. I'm only putting, if, you, you can't assume like all this over here. I'm sorry. You can't assume that, that is. I'm only, I've only put up there the percentage of students that are meeting and exceeding. And then you have the other categories as partially and not meeting.
Right. But that's, that gets you all the way to 100, presumably?
Correct. And, and we'll delve more into that in the second part, which will be on October 24th. So moving to, and all these slides are, you know, as you'll see, is your ELA. So looking at sixth through eighth grade. If you look at the comparison from year to year, you see that, you know, sixth grade, there was a dip there. So we want to look at that. But we also want, but I want to also celebrate in grade seven, that where we have an increase in the numbers, in the percentage of students that are in the exceeding. And on the 2019-
Oh, they moved the axes.
It's passed. And then looking at grade eight, you'll see that there's another improvement in the percentage of students that are scoring in the exceeding. And then in all grades, you'll see that we have done a lot better than the state. So we continue to improve in seventh and eighth grade. We have to look at sixth grade and see, you know, where we can shore up our instruction and kind of identify those areas that we need to improve upon, and by looking at item analysis of the MCAS, and really hone in on what, what we need to focus on through our instruction in order to show that improvement. Yes?
So I know you don't necessarily, I think these slides are, are really helpful. What is really disconcerting to me is that if you go one slide back, your 100% was the far right, and then you just, if you go there, now we're at 80%. So the first thing I said to Mr. Carden here was like, gosh, why do we do so well in middle school? And then I looked at, so anyway, I'm like a real stickler for that kind of stuff, and like, representation really matters. And so I just-
No, I couldn't figure out when I was like doing the slides.
Like, totally, I just like-
So with the Google Slides and the charts, for some reason, I couldn't get them all, like, for these slides, when I tried to put in, so you can put in a range of 0% to 100%.
Yep.
And when I put in 100%, it just went screwy.
Okay.
So I have to figure out how to make that adjustment. And I wasn't able to figure out for this presentation, but I will try to make sure that, moving forward, I'm able to figure that out and make, make them all consistent with the ranges.
Yeah, yeah. Because I mean, I think we do do better in middle school, but like, I'm such a visual learner that it's, it, yeah, thank you.
It's a technical glitch that I couldn't figure out. So looking at grade 10, now you'll, you'll notice here in grade 10, that in 2017 and 2018, there's a difference in color with, and so you can see on this one, I was able to figure out the 0 to 100%. And I just have no idea. I, I think that Google, we're, we're not friends right now, so. But if you look at the, the color of the chart, you'll see that in 2017 and 2018, the results are a different color, the percentages. And that's because that was the legacy MCAS. Okay? And so in grade, for grade 10, last year was the first year that 10th graders in the state took the ELA MCAS online. So there's a difference. And you'll see, the one thing that I want to point out is that if you look at the percentages and the gap between us and the state for 2017 and 2018, it's not that significant. But even on the more rigorous tests, which they're claiming that the next generation MCAS is, you'll see that we have increased our performance, and there's more of a, of a gap between us and the state. And that we have quite a high percentage of students scoring in the exceeding. Now, we're not where we want to be. Of course, we want to continue to improve in that area. But I think switching from one, the legacy, to the next generation, we didn't see a big falloff. I mean, I think it's relative to what the state did as well. But I think that it's something to highlight, that, hey, you know, we're still doing okay, but we want to continue to push that percentage of students who are in the meeting and exceeding to a higher percentage. So there's some work to be done there. And I, and I'm, I'm claiming that right now. Yes?
Oh, so, so I know that the test has gotten harder in 10th grade than it used to be. Are we seeing the proportion of kids who just aren't making it go up at all, or is it, is most of the remaining gap before 100 in the partially meeting?
No, we're still, so this is where, this is where they've, you know, this, this is where they, they give you an interpretive guide. So if we were to take that interpretive guide, and to answer your question, no.
We're not seeing an increase, okay.
An increase of, you know, students not meeting. You'll see that in the second presentation.
Okay, great.
So they give you an interpretive guide as how you can compare for how the students did on the next generation with the legacy. And so, you know, if, if we were to take these scores and translate them, we would probably be in the same percentile we were in the legacy, because they give you that opportunity to do that. But, you know, just looking at the way that we're performing on the next generation, again, you know, we're, we're still maintaining where we were. If that makes sense. Because you, you know, I tried to look back to say, okay, what if-
So we'd have more students who are not-
Failing, right.
Are failing and need to then take it over again.
Right.
That's not increasing.
Right.
Okay, great. Okay.
So I'm going to go to our district math results. So again, looking at grades three through five, highlighting that 2017 was the first year we had our next generation. And just comparing how we did from year to year, you'll see that there has been an uptick on fourth grade and fifth grade when compared to 2018. We have more students scoring in the meeting and the exceeding, which means that we're moving in the right direction. And then again, I look at that, and I look at where we focused our efforts last year with fourth and fifth grade. We integrated new units, or we integrated the investigations, new resource in fourth and fifth grade. We had a lot of job-embedded PD. And I think that that, you know, uptick in the scores is showing where that, where those efforts are paying off. Any questions? Okay. Looking at our sixth and eighth grade scores, again, we're, we're across the board here. We're, we're seeing an increase in percentage of students that are scoring in the exceeding. That was something I wanted to highlight. And that's in all grades, sixth, seventh, and eighth. There was a little drop there in sixth grade, but, you know, not in, you know, I don't, you know, looking at the, the percentage points, anything under like five percentage points, okay, we want to keep moving in the right direction and moving up. But I think one thing to celebrate is we have more students scoring in the, more percentage of students scoring in the exceeding. But there's a little drop-off there, and I'm, I'm recognizing that. And I know that we have to look to see why that happened. And I'm acknowledging that. But in seventh and eighth grade, we definitely increased quite a bit in the exceeding. And I want to attribute that to the fact that we have hired a brand-new principal at Addison. So there's like a stability there. The leadership was there. And so a lot of that has to do, I think, with that leadership and our, our focus on curriculum and aligning our standards. And it's starting to pay off. Looking at grade 10 math, again, you see the different colors in the chart. The teal. I don't even know what color green that is, but it's green, a shade of green, and teal represents the legacy. And then the navy blue and the green at the bottom represent the next generation. And so again, I want to point out the fact here is as you, as you see that the distance between how we did overall. When compared to the state on the next generation. Is still very significant. Significantly better. And so again, we're going to continue to work and do some item analysis and figure out where we need to focus our efforts to continue that improvement. Looking at our science results. And I know a comment was made earlier about our science results. So this, you know, you have to look through it to really focus on where the next generation. Uh, assessment was given and where the legacy was given. So in grade five, you'll see in 2017 and 2018. We gave the legacy MCAS. And then in 2019, which would have been the last year, is the first year that we gave the next generation. Uh, MCAS. And you'll see in, in grade five, and I think this is a result of, you know, inter, in implementing and, uh, uh, putting the false science kits. That, that the implementation was complete. And therefore you see that there is a. You know, I think, I think we did a very good job based upon, and it's starting to show off. Like how we're, um, we're doing, because there, there is an improvement. And that improvement took place even though it's on a more rigorous test. So if you see in 2019, it's two percentage points, but we, it's, it's not as if we dropped off. You know. We, we continue to maintain, and I think has a lot to do with our alignment with the standards and the introduction of the false science kits. So, you know, just so everybody knows, they only give the science, uh, assessment in fifth and eighth and 10th grade. So we're looking at the, uh, eighth grade results. And I'm very proud of how we've done at eighth, in eighth grade because we see. A huge improvement, even though they changed the test. Of the number of the percentage of students that are scoring in the exceeding category. And then again, in 10th grade, they gave the legacy test. And we pretty much maintained our performance in that, um, on 2019. When compared to previous years. So we're going to get into the student growth percentiles. I think I want to give the ranges, so. The ranges of the growth percentiles is that you want to be. 60% or higher, so these are given in percentiles. So as we look at this quadrant, you want to be in the upper right side, which has high achievement and high growth. The black dot in the middle is the state. And then the colors represent where each one of the grade levels falls on this, on this particular quadrant. So we want to continue to move to the upper right side. Which would mean high, high achievement and high growth. And if you, you know, the way that the scores are listed on the right-hand side, we are moderate to high growth across the board. We want to continue to push that. Because that means that even though students may be scoring in a certain category, they're showing growth. And we want to keep moving in the, in that, keep pushing that forward. Again, looking at, we're looking at, um, and so that, I'm sorry, that was ELA. Grades three through eight. This is math, grades three through eight. Again, we're looking at this quadrant, the state is the black dot in the middle. And as you see in grades three through eight in math. You want to see, we want to see, you know, the, the scores are pretty much on the right-hand side and moving in the right direction. Where you have that high achievement and high growth. And if you look to the right, you know, fifth grade is, that would be considered high growth. Eighth grade is 62%, that's high growth. And so we're moderate to high growth, and we want to continue to push that. Grade 10, you're only going to see one dot. So this is ELA. We have moderate growth there. The state is the black dot. And again, we're going to continue to move that to the right of the black dot and up to the right on the quadrant. This is math. Grade 10 math. And keeping in mind that this is also the next generation in ELA and math for grade 10. Questions or comments? Yes.
Do you, uh. Do you gather data on a specific cohort to follow them through the years?
Yes.
And to see if it's consistent, or, in other words. If they consistently score in those areas or showing growth and things of that nature?
Yes, they, they do on the Edwin's Analytics where you, you know, you're able to get your MCAS reports. You can follow a cohort of, a grade level cohort. From one grade to the next.
What's Project Lead the Way?
So, Project Lead the Way is, is similar to like project-based learning. Where it's a form of instruction that you implement within your district or your school. And it, it focuses on application. Um, like internships and really taking what the students learn in the classroom. And giving them opportunities to apply it in a certain area. It's very similar to project-based learning, but it's like a, it's like a methodology of instruction.
And then. You had mentioned on a few of these that you wanted to go back and look at why. You know, why you got the results you did and. What needs to happen with the. What changes need to happen with the curriculum or, or how to enable better student growth in the coming years? And I'm just hoping if, once you have some of these results, if you could come back and share them with us, because. That's something that's always a little frustrating to me is that we see these results, but we never see where. What's happening because of the result, you know, what, what's, what are the steps being taken? Next and how does, how they relate to what we found on the MCAS? I'm not asking to see everyone's scores and stuff, but just like, you know, we looked at it, we found out that people were missing this chunk of. Science or something, and so, you know, next year they're going to do that part longer or they're adding in it or something like that.
You know, I, you know, I thank you for bringing that, what I can do is I can maybe hit on that on part two of the, uh, presentation.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Because it wouldn't be that hard to do that. Let me just tell you some of the ways that we do that. You know, grade level teams, and I think that this year, we were able to, you know, change the elementary schedule. And give that time to principals and grade level teams to meet together to review data, look at student work. And so the MCAS would be one assessment that they're already discussing in those, they call them ACE blocks now. And that they're looking at where. In the curriculum and the standards, where we did a great job, you know, celebrate our growth. And then where are the areas we need to focus on, and you can easily do that by doing an item analysis. And the MCAS, uh, what they do is they release some questions, some questions they don't release. But they, you can also pull reports where you can see the percentage of students and how we did in each one of the standards. And then we break it down even more by looking at the various questions that were actually asked. Connected to that standard, some of the questions they release, some they don't. But it definitely, you can break it down by subgroup population as an aggregate, aggregate. To see where students did well on a particular standard and where we need to say, hey. You know, we really need to focus on this area in our instruction. So it wouldn't be that hard to do, and I can come back with that information in part two and say. This is what we found out for this particular subgroup or looking at the aggregate and say, okay, this is what we found out by that. Doing that item analysis and that's, looking at the standards.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, great, thank you. Next up, Paper City Hiring Report.
Let me know.
Yeah, we're still on public comment.
I'll try to go quickly. Not directed at you, that was directed at you. So, I'm going to start with, uh, uh, some slides that I saw last week at our, um. The Maspa, the Massachusetts Association of School Personnel Administrators Meeting. It was presented by Shay Edman from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. On some initiatives that they're doing, I'm not going to go over this whole slideshow, it's in the, in Novus, but there are a couple of slides I thought were interesting. That.
You know those batteries go.
It is.
Go bad quickly, I've never, when I used to use them.
Yeah. So a couple of things, I just, some, they did some MCAS stuff, but student enrollment in Massachusetts by race and ethnicity. Massachusetts is about, overall in the whole state, about 60%. White student population, about. Uh, I think 20, a little over 20% Hispanic. A little under 10% African-American and a little bit under that in Asian. If you look at the teachers, educator and teachers, they have, the top, uh, bar is all Massachusetts educators. And the bar beneath that is just teachers. And if you look at that, there, you know, 92% of the teachers in Massachusetts are white. Um, and compared to the students, um, you know, when only 60% of the students in Massachusetts are white. There's a big disparity, only about 3% of Massachusetts teachers are black or African-American. And a smaller, only 2% Asian and, um. I think the, uh, the number of Hispanic is about 3% as well, so. In the whole state, we have a huge disparity in terms of the number of students that we're, we're serving versus the educators who are teaching them. Now I want to go back to our. Yeah. So. So I just wanted to just put that in a little bit of context of what the whole, you know, every district in the state is, uh. Is attempting to increase the diversity of, um. Of the staff. In Arlington, our student population, we're about 70% white. 13% Asian, 3.44% black or African-American, 6.11% Hispanic Latino and, um. About 6.82% mult- multi-racial. Our employee numbers, similarly, we're predominantly white employees with smaller percentages. Of, um, African-Americans, Hispanics and, and Asians than our student population. Similar in some ways to the population of the state, uh, teacher and educator employee numbers. Our new hires since, so the, the new hires are from October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2019. With the bulk of those new employees coming over the summer into the, for the beginning of the school year. One of the issues we have is there's a, the N is a. New employees who do not identify, we didn't get the, um, you know, on the, the sheet that they fill out, they chose not to fill that. Section out, so there's a, you know, 11, almost 12% who didn't identify. Of those who did, um, well, again, of the, of the new hires, 74% are white. 4.41% Asian, 4.9% black, 3.4, 3% Hispanic. And, uh, Native American or Indian is a small percentage of 1.4%. AEA employees are all the, uh, of these teachers in the AEA Unit 8 bargaining unit. Of the teachers there, I think it, it's closely aligned with what the state has in terms of predominantly white teaching. Similar to the state, almost a 91%. Small percentage of, um, you know, 2.5% Asian, 1.25% black or African-American, 1.61% Hispanic. And then a number who don't identify. For new hires in the AEA since last year. 77 new hires, 70 are white. Three Asian, two black, one Hispanic, one not identified. Paraprofessionals, a little bit, um, higher percentage of. Paraprofessionals from diverse backgrounds, um, as you can see, um, we've. We have a little bit more, the percentages overall. Have increased in some areas and, and decreased in others, but again, predominantly white. The other thing that has kind of increased is the non-identified, and I have to look at why that is if we were. Categorizing people differently in years past, because that doesn't. That, that number doesn't make that much sense, so I have to go back and look at that. AAA Administration, Principal Central Office, IT and Administrative Assistance. Those numbers have, um. You know, 84, almost 85% bla, uh, white, um, 3.6% Asian, 6.12% black. 2.4% Hispanic and about 4% non-identified. Arlington After School Program, um, that is actually one area where, um, our after-school administration has had. More success probably than any other group in the district in attracting and hiring a diverse staff. And hiring more staff of color to teach in the after-school programs at Hardy, Thompson, Pierce, Gibbs. And, and the Bracket, um, Spanish Immersion Program. So you can see those numbers, um, are definitely better in terms of more, um. In some areas, more closely ma, um, aligning with the student population. Maintenance, Transportation and Food Service, similarly, a little bit more diverse than the, um, the staff as a whole in the district. And the comparison between students and staff ethnicity sort of side by side. It's pretty clear that, like the state, um, like most districts in the state, we have predominantly white staff serving a product, a more. Growingly diverse student body. And our goal always is to increase the diversity of the staff to more mirror, um, the student body. And I think some of the things that we do, that we've continued to do is, um. Participate in Mass Partnership for Diversity in Education, attend targeted job fairs. Really try to, um. Encourage, strongly encourage our administrators to reach diverse audiences when they're recruiting and to, um. There are filters we can use in, um, in school spring and other, um, job boards to, um. To attract a more diverse, um. Diverse teachings force, I think in the teaching. People who are licensed educators in Massachusetts, there are, I think the state, if you look at the other presentation that I put in, the state does have some. Some programs that they've launched in the past couple of years to try to increase the diversity of. Teachers, specifically teachers in Massachusetts, they have some, some grants, some things that we. Unfortunately, at this point, don't qualify for, a lot of those targeted, um. Grants and, and programs are targeted toward, um, districts that are more high needs than we are and are there, some of those. Those programs are limited, um, to other districts that we would not qualify for. So we are, um, you know, we're continuing to the, to do all of those things, the Mass Partnership for Diversity in Education has seen increased interest by other districts who want to join. I think a lot of, a lot, because a lot of districts are seeking to increase the diversity of their staff, they're looking for ways to do that, they think. That, you know, and it, it does help to join with other districts that have similar goals. To share ideas, to, to share best practices, and that's, you know, something we do, I think, in all of our. With the superintendent, assistant superintendent, special ed director, all of our, um, our job-alike groups in the state. Special Ed Director, all of our, our job-alike groups in the state, this is an issue that we all are thinking of. So, and I think the principals too.
Mr. Hainer?
The universities and teacher preparation, do they reflect the stats that you're showing, high, high percentage of white?
They do, yeah. I mean, there was one slide in the other presentation from the state, but I think it's 86% white enrollment in educator prep programs in the state.
Just a little better.
Part of the problem, part of the problem is, is, is the pool itself, you know, on the state level isn't being prepared.
There are multiple challenges, yeah. The, the pool itself, people who are, people from, you know, educators of color, people who, people of color wanting to go into education as a career, and I think that's similar in other professions as well, but, right, attracting people of color into educator prep programs, and, and then continuing through those programs and becoming licensed educators.
Being a little bit mercenary, it's a seller's market.
It sure is.
So, we are at a slight disadvantage with regard to teacher salaries in the area.
We are.
Okay. I just wanted to make that, that clear. Even if the pool was there, we'd still be an uphill struggle with us.
We are competing against Boston, Cambridge, Lexington, our 10, 12 communities and our surrounding communities.
Do any of those communities have a substantial difference in diverse staff than we do?
Well, I think...
Because of that factor that I just mentioned?
Well, I think there are certain communities like Boston and Cambridge that have different, I think still, I think Boston, and someone may be able to correct me if I'm wrong, I think Boston might still be under an affirmative action decree from years ago, and some other communities are as well.
But, the, the financial aspect, I guess my question is, aside from Boston and required by court order and things of that nature, the difference in salaries and stuff, are any of them have a significant increase in diverse staff, or is it still just the issue of the pool itself?
I think the districts that, that have higher salaries are probably able to, to attract
Okay.
more diverse staff, more staff in general, but, I mean, that's, that's one factor, I mean.
Dr. McNeil had something to add?
Yep.
Yeah, so this was a focus of my dissertation for my doctorate, and we also have to realize that, you know, Arlington is a majority-white district, and as you look at those districts that you just named, like Cambridge and Boston, you might have individuals that want to go back to the communities for which, from, from where they were, they come from, and they were educated, and they want to give back to the community. And because they have a higher percentage of students of color, African-American students, that that might also, you know, be a factor of trying to recruit staff of color to come to a majority-white district. So, I don't know whether or not you can, because when you look at pay and research, pay is not a very high on the indicator list of, that's going to attract people to a particular district, especially in teaching. So, because of the nature of the job and the way that people feel like they can give back to their community, we're also competing with those districts that have a majority, a higher percentage of students of color, and so they're gonna want to go back to those communities. And we, especially, even if they're not from a, from those communities, when you look at staff of color, when you speak to them, they want to go to those communities where you have a higher percentage of color, students of color.
I think that is a major contributing factor, but I also think, and I'm not suggesting we attempt to compete, but schools like Lexington, there is that additional factor when, when the salaries are increased by a higher percentage. I agree with you. I think giving back to the community, that's one of the things educators, you have a good education, you want to give back a little bit more, you want to share with your guys, I think that's a primary focus. But if there's a toss between two communities on that basis, there's a degree of mercenary, and, and you're looking at families are growing and things of that nature. That's been an issue that we have in this community, it's gonna continue to be an issue in this community, it's not gonna be solved in one night.
And I also want to highlight the efforts that Mr. Spiegel has done in order to, you know, create opportunities for people of color to come and just explore the opportunity of working in Arlington. If you look at our diversity coffee that we had last year, it was very well attended, and that's because he's gone out to various job fairs at different universities in order to, you know, just speak with people and, and, you know, share, you know, various qualities of Arlington, and invited them to the diversity coffee. So, we had a, we have a, we had a very nice turnout for our diversity coffee, and then we have to match those positions with our vacancies. So, it's a very complex problem, and it's gonna take some time for us to resolve it.
And I, I do think there are also some, you know, if selling education as, selling the profession to people in general as, you know, a place, a career they want to, to explore and go into, is something that I think our teachers, our administrators, our everyone sort of has a hand in, and, yeah.
Ms. Seuss?
Yeah, so I, I want to thank everyone for their efforts, because I do think that we do take this seriously. I would love to see the numbers of unidentified go down, I was gonna ask that, and I know that you, your answer is you're not sure yet why, why those numbers are so high. I want to encourage people in the community, we just heard the story of our new science director say that got the, the notice of the position because of a personal connection. And I think personal connections can be very powerful, so I want to encourage people in the community, if they know people, to sort of talk of Arlington, you know, of diverse fact, because, because personal connection, you know, as you point out, that pay is not necessarily the only motivation, sort of showing that Arlington is a welcoming community can be really important, and I just want to encourage people to sort of help spread the word. I just want to also make a comment, it seems like one place that we could all sort of maybe focus our attention on, and maybe there have been efforts, is on the paraprofessionals, which are of a more diverse background, and that, who may not see themselves necessarily as teachers, but are obviously interested in students and, you know, in, in the educational system, and, and might be able to be sort of mentored in that direction.
And, and I think as I've highlighted in my, the last presentation, just on the new hire presentation, that we always hire paraprofessionals, teaching assistants who have been teaching assistants to become licensed educators are hired in classroom positions, usually at the elementary level, but sometimes in other levels as well, and that happens every year. And so, right, attracting more diverse people into the professional ranks will lead to more teachers.
Right. And then just also, any sort of mentorship that we can give
Yeah.
people who may not know what the path is, you know, it's helpful. Great.
Dr. Altheanbi?
I read through the DESI presentation that you gave, but thought it was very interesting. One thing, right after their slide where they talk about the mass educator preparation program demographics, they talk about barriers to recruiting teachers of color, and the three things they have listed are obstacles to completing college, impact of student debt, debt on teacher preparation, enrollment and completion, and teacher licensure exams. But, I was wondering, looking at the demographics, I'm not sure I feel like the barriers they show match the demographics that are there. And I just, did they talk about, I mean, I don't know if that's a reasonable assessment or not, but it feels like there's something else going on.
Yeah, I mean, they definitely, we talked about the, the MTEs as a barrier for, for some people, and, and there is a cost to take the MTEs, and if you don't pass the MTEs, you have to pay to take them again, so that is, that can be a barrier. I mean, that, that is one thing, that's something that comes up frequently in meetings I attend of different groups, that's an issue.
It just seems like, the, feels like the barriers before they get into college, because they're not...
Right.
So...
If I may, when I went to college, there was a lot of state schools undergraduate, you got a degree in elementary or secondary sci, uh, secondary, and you got to teach high school, and the certification was lifetime. Now, you have to, you're expected to get a master's degree within five years, or with some extensions, you have to pass the MTEs, and you have to continually every five years, take more courses and things of that nature. So, there's a financial issue. The state schools are not as abundant as they used to be. I mean, they were, they were, they specialize in all the different areas of education. So, there is a, they're private schools now, you go to Leslie, that would cost you a fortune, BU, and the other schools around, BC, and things of that nature. So, I think to get a degree in education and to stay in education, there is a financial cost, even if you're successful on the MTEs.
And there are some areas, if you want to teach special education, you have to take a lot of MTEs,
Yeah.
do a lot of, there's a lot of coursework that you have to take to get that license, that, I mean, and I will say that special education is one area where it's hard to find as much of a diverse applicant pool.
And with success in that area, you're a high commodity to go to other states, and where it's cheaper to live as well, and make a better salary. So, I, I don't mean to be mercenary, but does it, once you succeed in the state and get certification, you're, you've got a high product to sell.
Yeah.
Tough.
All right, anybody else?
Good job, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Suckman?
Yeah, I think one of the things we have to think about in terms of recruiting teachers, no matter where we are, is that the experience that somebody has in the school system as a student is often the influence of whether they want to come back and feel welcome.
Good point.
And so, that if minority students who attend a system do not feel welcome or happy, they will not come back to work for you. So, that the marker is, how many of the folks who are going through your system are coming back looking to work for you?
All right, anybody else? Great. Thank you, Mr. Spiegel. And next, Ms. Seuss, we have the Arlington Human Rights Commission documents.
Yeah, so I want to take these up separately, because there's different issues I know members of the committee feel about the two, two things, but I just want to give you the history of these two documents. The Guidelines for Responding to Hate Incidents was brought to us, both these were brought to us two years ago, by, by the Arlington Human Rights Committee. At that point, they had met with the chief, then Chief of Police, they had come up with, with this, and they were presenting it to us for our consideration. We, at that time, had some concerns, which we gave back to them, and through, because of internal things going on with that committee and other things, it sort of died for a while. So, that is, we then, this summer, had a meeting to discuss this issue with the Superintendent in our Subcommittee's office, I attended that meeting. There were teachers, administrators, there was police officers, and there was Human Rights Committee members, where we did a lot of wordsmithing, and came up with something that everyone felt good about, then brought it to the Community Relations Committee, and there were some more wordsmithing going on. I sent that back to the Human Rights Committee, they said that was fine, and now it's being brought back to us. Now, maybe Mr. Hainer would like to speak to this issue. The one question is, what is the status of this document, and whether it's sort of a, you know, a document between the Human Rights Committee and the Superintendent, or whether it should be an official school committee document. Now, let me just give you the background of the other thing, and then I think we should talk these things separately. So, the other document is a school liaison document. That came about, also about two years ago, out of conversations that Sharon Grossman and I had, that it, there was just a lot of frustration on both sides about what exactly the relationship was between the Arlington Rights Committee and the schools. And the Arlington Rights Committee used to have a really great relationship 15 years ago, and somehow it deteriorated, and the, and the idea was, let's try to come up with some language that would codify that relationship between the, who the liaisons are, and sort, so that when a liaison goes to a principal, the principal doesn't feel sort of put off by that, and, and everyone sort of feels comfortable with it. So, we worked on that for a while. The agreement was that there wouldn't be a liaison at each school, that it'd be sort of a, one or two people who really know the district, know the research, know the resources in the community and, and in the state, who could then be a, both a, a resource for parents, but also potentially a resource for administrators if they so asked. Brought that to the human rights, to the Community Relations Committee, and that, and had some suggestions, sent it back to the Human Rights Committee, they said yes to those suggestions, and now it's back to us. And this is potentially a, a document that we might have a different feeling about, because it doesn't directly involve sort of a, a conversation about, about how we want the Superintendent or the administration to behave, right? So, so we might, as a committee, feel differently about that document than the first document. So, giving all that background, I think we should take up each in turn, and people should express their thoughts.
Okay, so let's, let's start with the, the guidelines. Okay, Mr. Hainer?
With the guidelines, I think if, if we adopt, and I'm not saying we do, if we adopt these guidelines, I think there are at least two areas that I have deep concern on what to do on the line, notify the principal. I would add the Superintendent and the principal. I think that's very important, because, and then going further down in the document, down on follow-up, that, that piece right there, replace the word principal wherever it shows up in this paragraph with the word Superintendent, because I think it's very important that the Superintendent not only be notified, but the Superintendent has historically been the spokesperson for the district, and so that we speak with one voice, and not have separate interpretations. Not to say the principals would do that, but principals are concerned with their own particular school.
Okay, so I, I...
Could I?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I just want to finish. I'm not saying, I, I see, I'm not opposed to this, the other part is, all these areas have always belonged to the school district. I have no problem the, the Rights Commission being involved in stuff, but, and, and I appreciate all the changes that you've made, they, they were very encompassing. But I, I personally think the Superintendent is the first and last word on communications to the community as the district.
Ms. Seuss?
Oh, so, I think, I think, I thought you were just going to speak to the issue that you raised in the Subcommittee meeting, because there is a question about what the status of this document is. So, if it's a school committee document, then we should be working on, right, but if it's not a school committee document, then, you know, the group of 20 people, what?
We just do this.
Well, then the 20 people who are in the meeting, including the police officers and stuff, who worked on all this language, and I don't think the language is perfect, it's just, who do you go back to, right? So, do we gather that 20 people, those 20 people back in the room together, or do we say, you know, Human Rights Committee? So, if it's a, if it's a school committee document, then we should be involved in wordsmithing it, but if it's not, then we either say we like it or we don't. Yeah, I agree.
Yes, Ms. Hainer?
I do not, as long, I have no problem it going back to them, but I don't think anyone but the Superintendent can, should even talk to principals, and get information from principals, and directing principals what to do. That, and that's why I suggested initially, this belongs to the school committee as a, as a document.
Dr. Allison Anbi?
I'm confused who this document is speaking to. I mean, it sounds like there's also confusion who it's coming from.
Yes.
But, who is it speaking to? Is the audience, the staff, the, the school staff, is it parents, is it both, is it the community at large with a school-related incident? You know, I, I don't understand who the audience is, and that makes a difference in how I view it. Then, I also, when I read it, and I understand this is wordsmithing stuff, but I think it's trying to be a, this is what you do list, but it has some things in depth, it has other things that aren't mentioned at all, except at the top, and it has, it, it's kind of all over there. It either needs to be a, this is what you do, or a top-level, these are the kind of things you, you need to do. things you, you need to do, and then referring to something else that's a, this is what you do in detail. Or, I mean, that's one way of doing it, but it's confusing to me for several reasons.
Okay, Ms. Seuss?
So, so generally, I mean, I don't think it's written perfectly, but, you know, you get a committee of 20 people and various, and two years of process, it ends up being messy in the end. But, but basically, I'll tell you what the history of it is. The history was that there was an incident several years ago that was not, that was covered up, if you remember, and that alarmed both the police department and the Human Rights Committee, and they said, let's work together on this document. And that, that's what happened. And they said, let's come up with a protocol that would be shared with, that, with superintendent's permission would be shared with all administrators. So, the idea is this is supposed to be a document, that every time we have a new administrator, you say, this is our protocol, this is what happens. Whether we're going to radically change it has to do with what the status of it is. And so, I think we should talk about, do we, I mean, the, you know, okay, that's great, the Arlington Human Rights Committee and the police department got together and they talked, and other people got involved, but we don't care, because this kind of document should be ours, and we're going to write the way we want. Or do we say, no, it's not our document, it's something we can say, yes, you know, oh, it sounds great, but it's not our document. And so, I think that's really the question here.
Okay, so, I guess my feedback is, I'm not speaking to the, it's ours or not. My feedback is, as a protocol, I don't think this works, because it's, you're, you're asking for something that you can just hand the new principal and say, here, if something happens, this is what you do, but it says identify the incident, and it has nothing about what you mean by identification or anything. Preserve the evidence, same thing. It's like, it doesn't talk about that, but then it has notify the principal, and then document, and then down below it has document, and it has more stuff. It's just, it's kind of, it, it's not just.
I didn't create it, I just.
Yeah, 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 no, I'm just saying, it's, okay, yes.
So, yeah, so, Dr. Bodie, I was going to say, I, I think we need to hear from Dr. Bodie, because my understanding is that you have reviewed this and you were okay with it.
With the.
So, is this a document you would be comfortable giving to principals?
The principals have seen this, and they've given their blessing to it. I, I don't think that, I think that, Ms. Seuss is correct, when you have a group of people trying to wordsmith, that it's not coming out perfectly, but the intent of this is that there is this communication with the principal, the principal with the superintendent right away, as well as the people in that school. There is also communication with the police department, which is done through our SRO. Doesn't mean that the chief and I don't talk, we do, and as well as having the Human Rights Commission. So, we actually unfortunately had this in practice this last week. I think the incident you're referring to is something that I didn't even know about.
It was a while ago.
Right, I mean, it happened a number of years ago, and I don't think that that was a, I think that was a one-off situation. That's not how it really operates. You know, I am pretty much the very first person that the principal will call as we assess the situation, and that's what happened this time, and I'll talk a little bit more about it in my superintendent's report. But, but everyone has seen this, and people would argue with, it's not perhaps as well-worded or as perhaps as, you know, do this, 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 and this, but it captures the intent of how we want to operate.
Mr. Schlickman?
Okay, if this is ours, it becomes a policy, and it should be written as a policy and given as a directive to the superintendent and the district, that these are our expectations. If this is something that the superintendent wishes to instruct her principals as to what to do, what her expectations are in the event of an instance, we can look at this as, okay, fine, Superintendent Bodie, hands the principals, this looks good to us. And even without a vote, you know, sort of one of these, without objections, thank you for bringing this before us, this looks like a reasonable process for you to direct your principals to do. I view this in the latter category as something the superintendent is comfortable with this, and the principals are comfortable receiving this direction, and the Human Rights Commission is comfortable interacting with us in this manner. It's a beautiful thing, and we should just sit back and let it happen.
Ms. Morgan?
So, I, I think it's interesting that the, the beginning of this was an incident that didn't get brought forward, which I also am not privy to, which is fine. I think back to last year, when there was an incident at Stratten that was not necessarily a hate incident, right? There was graffiti that was violent, that was not reported initially. And so, I, I'm, you know, I, I know that these kind of things, it's very hard to parse, right? So, what is hate, right? Is saying you want to kill somebody hate, well, no, because it's not directed to an individual or group of people based on these, you know, 12 to 14 characteristics. Presumably, under that scenario, this documentation wouldn't be necessarily followed, right? So, but I do, I, I, what I, what I get concerned about is, is that we, we have very specific, sort of, there are like checkboxes on this document, as if like, I could take my pen and be like, okay, did you do this? Did you do this? Did you do this? When I see that with something like this, and then I think about all of the other like nuances that aren't going to fit into this, then I start to get to be uncomfortable. I agree with Mr. Schlickman, if this is what superintendent would like to have and, and hand out with check marks or not, you know, I, I feel comfortable with how you handle these things, so I have not been concerned historically, or am I concerned now? So, if you want a piece of paper with boxes on it, or if you don't, or you know, not, like, I'm, I'm saying that sort of tongue-in-cheek, right? But it, I'm kind of like, I, I don't have a strong feeling about it. I do think I would have a hard time sort of codifying this in any kind of official capacity.
Anybody else, first time?
Yeah, so, I'm, I'm with Paul. I don't, I think this is a protocol that the, or procedure the superintendent has developed, and she's comfortable with it, and so I don't think there's anything the school committee do here. I don't.
So, yes, I, I'm going to agree with my colleagues. I think if the Human Rights Commission is looking for a specific policy, then it needs to be much more narrowly tailored. And I think, I think, this has been through the wringer for a couple of years. It, you know, it, in the absence of the, of the HR, of the Human Rights Commission asking for this, would we have developed this exact document? Certainly not.
Right.
But it was something that we were responding to them, working with another organization in town. The superintendent was receptive to that. Jennifer played middleman quite a bit to help move it along, and, you know, it's, it, it covers, I think, sort of the basic requirements that I'm comfortable with. And, and again, it's not something that I think we should develop as a policy. Mr. Haner?
Policy file, ACH-R, Procedures for Addressing Complaints, Discrimination or Harassment Based Upon Protected Classifications or Taliated, Related Retaliation. One, where to file a complaint. Two, content of complaint, whole procedure with your checklist. Investigation is part three. Four, resolution of the complaint. Five, timelines, follow-up. Six, appeals, with all the things, this is our current revised policy, listing all federal state statutes and regulations. Again, if you want it, it's ACH-R. So, it's already been codified, codified.
Okay, so, I think the consensus is that we're not going to take action on that policy.
Yeah.
And you can communicate to the Human Rights Commission that you've agreed with it, and we'll distribute it to your principals. Okay. Moving on to the next one, the liaisons. Is there sentiment about, or suggestion about what to do with that one?
Yes, I, I just wanted to make, point out that, that Guidelines, I think, does, you know, just to, sort of, the word Guidelines does, I think, suggest a looser interpretation of that policy. But, yeah, so, that, when we met in subcommittee, there was less concern about making that a school committee policy, so I, but I, we did want to bring it to the full committee to see if there was any thoughts. That felt like a, sort of, an agreement between the Human Rights Committee and the superintendent and their administrative team about what felt comfortable to everyone. And so, but we did want to bring it to you to see if there's any questions or concerns or thoughts about its status.
So, who are the liaisons? They're not on the Human Rights Commission, but they're other people?
They are in the Human Rights Commission. So, one of, actually, one of the historical, so, there was this great relationship 15 years ago, and that sort of fell apart. One of the concerns was that, I think administrators weren't comfortable having a, a parent at each school sort of coming in and inserting themselves in a way that felt inappropriate. And so, the idea that if you have only one or two who really does have expertise in the kind of resources that are around, and, and then also can be a point person for, the reason that this liaison role is really important is to sort of maybe diffuse tension. Parents who feel that, that something isn't being resolved, or, or aren't sure what to do, can talk to that liaison, and that liaison can then maybe help that, that parent explain what has happened, navigate the system, you know, communicate with the principal. Parents weren't always feeling like things were being resolved, but they may not have known what, what had happened, actually. So, so that was sort of the feeling that this person could, one or two, and it was, the idea is that it's going to be one or two people, and they hadn't decided. Either one person for the entire district, or one person for elementary, one person for secondary, could sort of play that role.
Mr. Haner?
Clarification, are they representing this, are they the liaison between us?
Nope.
Are they sent, then why are we involved in it then? If they are the liaison of the Human Rights Commission?
Only because, actually, Sharon Grossman and I helped develop this, and we brought it to Community Relations, originally yours.
Okay, I understand that, and I appreciate that. I, I just want to be very clear that they're not representing the school committee.
Yep.
And, and they'll have no authority with the principals whatsoever. It's a communication.
Right. They have the authority that the town vests in the Human Rights Committee.
Yeah, fine.
But not an additional authority.
Fine, yeah, thank you.
Dr. Allison Ampi?
Just for clarification, are they actual members of Human Rights Commission?
As I understand, that's what they're looking for.
Okay, okay.
In fact, what I understand, actually, is that our new, one of our new appointees, Kathleen, is, I think, has been tapped to be one of the people.
All right, so, other, again, so, no action on this one as well, is what we're saying? Okay.
Let's bring it to you, yeah.
Okay, so, good work on getting these done, finally. Thank you for bringing.
I can cross it off the list of things to do.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Yep.
All right, MASC Annual Business Meeting. So, the resolutions that were in the, in Novus were not the full set. I did, I did, just noticed that this afternoon and did email that around, and I think we got that in the mail. I haven't been kept, keeping up with my paper mail, so it's probably somewhere in a pile in my, my house. But I didn't see anything needed commenting on this year. Did anybody have any comment on the resolutions? All right, and so, we have to appoint a, what is it called?
Delegate.
Delegate, yeah, that's the word. Is anybody attending that wants to be the delegate? Mr. Schlickman?
Move to approve Mr. Schlickman as the Arlington School Committee Delegate, second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed or abstentions? Unanimous, great. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
All right, I actually have a, a number of things to talk about this evening, but since we have on the, on the schedule, the AHS Building Project Update, let me start with that. We have, since, actually, early this summer, after the override, we have continued in the design process. There have been numerous meetings as this process, as the project evolves. What I wanted to mention tonight is that we are at a stage where we're ready to have another community forum, and, and the purpose of this forum is really just to update the community on where the project is. Since the last community forum, we have hired a contractor with Consigly, and they have not participated in any forums in the past, and so they are going to present the information that they have at this point in terms of phasing of the project. And this, this community forum, which will be moderated by our, our Chair of the Building Committee, Jeff Thielman, will be on October 30th at Town Hall from 7:00 to 8:30. And we're going to get information out, and the town will help us disseminate that information through that weekly newsletter. But I think it's an opportunity for people to come and hear both the current status of the design, where we are with the, the phasing of this whole project, which we had a meeting about today as well. And, you know, I think that parents probably have a lot of questions, and this is an opportunity for them to, you know, to hear where we are. So, what's going to happen the rest of this fall is that we have a number of meetings that we're going to, we're going to be engaging in about the design. The MSBA has us go through a process where we have to look at the design and, and see if there's, you know, it's called the evolution of it, in terms of the value engineering of the project, and that is all part of the design process that we go through with MSBA. So, we have a meeting, another building committee meeting this coming Tuesday, and in November, I think we have probably four scheduled, as we, you know, as we get closer to the point where we have to deliver to MSBA, I think it's right before Thanksgiving, our design documents. And so, that, that process then will move into construction drawings, and as we have told the public, and it is going to happen this way, that we're going to begin construction in March, and we can talk more about that, the phasing is like down the road.
March, or begin?
We are going to be beginning in the pre-construction in March, yes.
Pre-construction, okay.
Yes, there's, there's a number of things, like laying utility lines and creating some additional parking, and there's some footings that have to be put in. This, that, that phasing and what's going to happen then is getting more developed all the time.
And to save money, we're going to have some members of the school committee help the digging.
Mr. Haner has a history of digging up front.
Yesterday, preparing to put the flags out, Flags for Heroes, I got an emergency phone call, said somebody's digging up the lawn. They were out doing test pits yesterday, right in the middle where I'm trying to locate my little plug, so I panicked, and the guy said, if we find any, we'll be careful. And he was very nice, they were very nice, and the facilities people have been very good.
Ms. Seuss, go ahead.
Oh, can I ask you a question about timing? So, when will we know sort of more details about the finances, in terms of like, do we have to make any cuts, you know? What, what timing of that is that?
Probably in November.
November, okay.
What's happening?
So, we show a recession right now?
Pardon? Yeah, I know.
Quick, four-month recession, yes, I know. Four-month recession, right now.
Go, no, when we go out to bid.
Oh, when we go to bid, okay.
Fake sales.
Which is, then, when's the bidding then?
Bidding will start next summer.
Okay.
There'll be some things that will happen before, because, you know, you bid the project, bid the phases out as you go along. As we, since June, there has been a lot of design meetings that have gone on, that have been with staff, with the building principal and system principal, you know, just looking at, I mean, even down into the weeds of, can you put another desk in this office space? And if you do, where will the plugs be? For, I mean, it really has to get down to that level of detail. That, those designs will go to the new, another cost estimating, because as you go through this MSBA process, there's different stages of completed, completed reports, or I would say, the design, the design drawings, you go 60% to 90% and go forward. Eventually, you're at 100%. But there, at each one of those stages, you go through a cost estimating process. And so, it's actually sort of hard to know what the changes that have been made over the last couple of months as the project evolves, how that's going to get costed out. Because the last time we did a costing out, it was at the schematic stage, which we had very limited diagrams that'd get down into that, to that level. So, yes, and that's why there's so many meetings in November, because, you know, when we get the cost estimates back mid-November, like the 15th, we have a lot of decisions to make before it goes to MSBA.
Got it.
All the, just to kind of add some context, the All the, just to kind of add some context, the, you know, as Kathy said, we're required by the contract we signed with the MSBA to do cost, to do value engineering up until, you know, it's, they end to twenty twenty-four. So required to do that all the time. So we have a process in place in which the six or seven subcommittees are meeting, they're supposed to be meeting between now and the end of, between now and early November, to frame out what reductions would look like. What would they be there, what would, what would they accept or what's, what could work in terms of reduction? So everyone's doing, there's, you know, the committees are supposed to be meeting this month to do that kind of homework so that we're prepared for November votes.
Got it. Okay.
And, and, you know, some things that we were to eliminate are permanent and some things would be alternates that we might take up later on. So we'll just see how, I mean, it's, you know, I think people just have to sort of, we all have to be patient. And we don't have any cost estimates back yet.
And I think, I was in, at the last meeting, which was last week, but I think the sense of the committee is that you certainly have a hierarchy of priorities. I mean, the things that you can't change later, those are things you need to make sure you make excellent decisions about early on. And there are things that you can change and it's, as someone said, as we go through this, this is going to go on, the entire length of the project, making these decisions. Because it just, you know, costs change. All right. So I want to address a number of things. One is the recent incident at Odison, just briefly, because I think at this point, everyone is aware of what happened to some extent, that there was some anti-Semitic graffiti. You know, one of the things that, that Mr. Maringer, Principal Maringer sent out to parents, I think is really true. I mean, these, unfortunately, we're seeing these kinds of incidents throughout our whole country, everywhere. But what really is important is how you respond to them. And we, we can't let these things go because being silent about them just says, well, it's okay, just brush it aside. We're not going to be silent about it. But it also is a school and it's a middle school and this is a place where we, students have to learn and understand the impact of actions, whether they're words or written words. And so the, the effort at the middle school is to, to help, help students learn from this incident. And certainly began with meetings at the seventh and eighth grade level this week. And the, in the aspire meetings that they have with students, they're going to be showing videos from Facing History beginning tomorrow and on Monday. There was an IT glitch today that didn't make it possible to move forward with that. But the idea of this is to be an upstander, not a bystander. And that's a theme that is going to, it resonates with the school. I know that in the seventh grade, there's a book that they read and again, it's on the same kind of theme, which is Warriors Do Not Cry. Again, being, you know, you can't let these things just slide and, and because that's when it becomes the, the, the new normal. So, you know, we have Ms. Keys here tonight and I don't know if she wants, I don't want to put her in a spot, but I don't know if she wants to say anything about how this has been at the middle school.
Just that we have great kids. And I think what we sometimes forget is that one thing middle schoolers are really great at is knowing how to push our buttons. And they know exactly what to write on the wall to get everybody really upset. And I don't see antisemitism at the Odison. I, I don't. I see kids liking to make a, make a stir sometimes. I think the response has been completely, completely appropriate. I think the majority of the kids are annoyed by this, like, why do we have to sit and talk about cultural competency again? We know all these things. We don't say these things. This kid's terrible. That's why we reported it to you. I'm so proud of the kids who immediately came forward and said, there's something on the bathroom wall. It was minutes. So we have great kids. And overall, I hope that this doesn't cloud the perspective of that.
Well said. Very, very well said. So we're moving forward and the school's moving forward together on this. And I, and then, and I applaud them all for their, their thoughtful response to what has happened. And hopefully this will be the last of it. As I said in the press release, as you mentioned, you know, they do know this, they do know how to push your buttons. And there's also that element of copycat. And we're hoping that, you know, once, once you give, this is the problem. Once you give attention and respond, then you encourage other people, well, let me get their attention again. On the other, then there's that dilemma. Should you respond or not respond, you know? And so I, I think it's been as thoughtful as it probably could be in this particular instance. Onto another topic. And that is, there was an article in the Boston Globe about lunchtimes in the Arlington Public Schools. Some parents are complaining that we don't have adequate time for students to, to eat lunch. And I'm actually going to send out a notice, just a little letter to all of our elementary parents because we do not want students to be hungry in our schools. We know that when that happens, they're not going to be receptive to learning. They're not going to be engaged in that process. And actually, over the many years, we have been working to try to make sure that doesn't happen. And I, I want to publicly express our gratitude to Arlington Eats for their partnership in making sure that we have healthy snacks in every building that's available all day long. And if you go into our schools, in some schools, a little more obvious that's there, but it's, but I, every principal knows that that's the case. And, and faculty as well. Odison has this, this catch of healthy snacks every day for students as well. And there's no teacher who would say, if you're hungry, you have something to eat. We have forty-minute blocks, twenty minutes, a forty-minute block, twenty minutes goes for lunch and twenty minutes for recess. What Arlington Public Schools did a number of years ago, we looked at some research that had been done that actually when you have lunch before recess, kids tend to rush through their lunch and not eat. So whenever we've been able to do that, we've, we flipped it where they go out to recess first and then lunch so that they're eating more of it. It's always not possible. So if two grades are paired for a lunch, a lunch forty-minute block, they have to flip during the year. So that it's sort of divided up a little bit. But the other thing is when they have early lunch, and somebody mentioned kindergarten, when they have an early lunch, which is ten-thirty, though I have to say, having been many years as a teacher, ten-thirty is when you start to feel like you're very hungry, right? They have afternoon snacks. That just is part of how it works. So there's really not a way to change, you can't change the proportion of the twenty-twenty because you have often shared lunch periods. So, but the important thing is for people to know that we do not want any child to be hungry. If they are hungry, they should eat something and tell their teacher they need to get a snack. So that's, it's a, you know, I'm, I'm sorry that this was a perception of parents, but really, the work we've done in the last number of years to make sure this doesn't happen has been substantial. And with the support of the Arlington community.
So, sorry, just a, just a comment on that.
Sure.
I mean, the, the perception is there because that's what parents think. I mean, it, they haven't been clearly told that, well, yes, a lot of the schools do send out the notice about the closet of snacks. But it sounds like that's for people who can't afford the snacks or forget a snack or something. It's not for people who rushed through lunch and didn't get a chance to finish their lunch or eat enough at lunch. So I think, happy to look at the, the draft, but I, I think if you, and I think some of the teachers, if you ask some of your elementary teachers, they're not here and they're not here, do you always permit your students to have snack? Do they know they're allowed to have snack? They don't. They don't, they don't know that they're allowed to have snack if they're hungry. So I, I think this is great. There should be a communication on it. It should also go to the principals, to the staff. But I think the, there are a lot of communication issues in the district and the perception is there because that's what people think. It's not, you know, there haven't been communicated clearly that snacks are allowed. So this will be a new communication. It's great. But it shouldn't be a big surprise, I think.
Ms. Warren?
So just, and two things. I have lots of elementary students that live in my house. I have one that's at the very early end in first grade. I have two fifth graders. And I think that it's handled differently even in the elementary schools. My fifth graders came home this year and said, Mom, we can have snack whenever we want now, right? Which I then, that happened and then I got four text messages from parents who were like, my kids have allergies and there's all this food in the classroom and how are they going to stay safe? So it is, it's, it's a little tinderboxy. And so I just think as we talk about it and communicate about it, we just want to be really careful that we understand what's happening. I have not asked my son's first grade teacher, having volunteered weekly in kindergarten last year, I can't imagine if it was a sort of snack, you could have a snack at any time, five-year-olds. I don't know. I can tell you that like snack with my kids at my house is very fraught. They want this snack that day. They want to have a snack at one o'clock or they want to have a snack at two-thirty or they want to have a snack at ten. So I, I can't imagine being in a situation, especially K through three or four, where it could be snack-free-for-all. Like if you're hungry, you can have a snack? Like probably not, right? Like I don't think we can have kids having snacks all the time or anytime they want. So I, I don't know that that's, I just, I think we want to be careful about, or I guess I urge you to be careful in thinking about how this is communicated. Because I do, I think that it's, you know, I think that it's tricky. Does that make sense?
Well, yes and, yes and no. I, I hear that you're getting different messages as a parent from teachers or the kids are getting different messages. And does a five-year-old know that if I'm starving, I can have something to eat and would say something to a teacher? That's a good question. I'm not really sure how that would be.
I would, but many others wouldn't.
But many others would not. It is true that you don't want kids eating all the, you know, throughout the entire day, but I don't, I haven't seen that that much. And I sent out the message that's going to stand, which hasn't been sent yet, to, to the principals to see if there was anything inaccurate in it. And so there may be more comments when I end this meeting as well and I may go out tomorrow instead. But it's, there is probably no teacher in the district who would want to be knowing that a child is in the class and, and hungry. Just would not want that at all and would be very sensitive to it. But you're, you're right. The, one of the issues with snacks that are brought from home can be things that have to do with allergies. What I have seen from the snacks that we have available, and Thompson's a really good example of that. In fact, I was just there on Tuesday. You know, you've got apples and applesauce and they're not, they're not necessarily snacks that are going, they had bags of carrots. I mean, those kinds of things. They're not snacks that are going to traditionally cause an allergic reaction. Now, that's not to say, there's not children allergic to apples. I get, I get that. So you're right. It is tricky how to balance all these things. And, but the one thing that is not going to change in the near future is, is the amount of time that we have in the school day for lunch. And so we're trying to maximize the time we have, be sensitive to this issue of hungry children and at the same time, give them recess as well.
Ms. Hainer?
I've been fortunate going into the classroom, mainly the third grade with some of the older ones at the elementary level. When they first brought the Arlington Eat, the food in, I asked about it. I think we have phenomenal staff aware of those kids that need immediate energy aspects to it. As Dr. Boddy just said, the food that's there is healthy and safe. They're very conscious of that. I've seen kids, while I'm waiting to go in the classroom, kids will walk by, there's the bowl there. They'll just take a piece at all ages. Again, I go along with what you said, Mr. Garden, communication is important. That everyone knows it. The teachers are in a constant balancing act of knowing medical histories of kids who has allergies, who doesn't, watching what's going on in the room. And when I've done presentations in the classroom, kids are very, very respectful. They're not all sitting there lounging and just feasting away. They're, they're respectful. Some kids need that energy boost right then and there. Other kids are aware of it. And it's done very well, I think. Unlike twenty years ago when I was teaching, when somebody would be pulling out something and passing it around to me and it's a distraction. It's part of the regular program. The teachers are good. Wouldn't hurt just to remind everybody one more time. But I think the, I can only speak to the elementary. I haven't, I don't know what goes on at the, the other ones. But the, the elementary does an extremely good job and thanks to the people in the community that has supported this with us. Kudos to them.
Mr. Schlickman?
Yeah, it, it's kind of a classroom management issue and the, the way you'd structure it in kindergarten is going to be different than what you're going to do in fifth grade. So it's not going to be a blanket, one-size-fits-all policy. But the other thing that I want to make sure that the parents understand is that a tight control on the amount of time available in the CAF for, for lunch is important because you want it to be the, just, you have to hit a just right mark of long enough that you can get something to eat and eat it, but not so long that they have too much time there and they get bored and antsy and start playing around and it, and it becomes a problem. So that, you know, a kid who is repeatedly not getting lunch because it's delayed, you might want to find some way to make sure that the kid gets earlier in the line than later in the line, especially if they're coming in from the playground. If, if they have the recess first and the kid doesn't want to come into lunch and is the last one in, yeah, okay, it's, it's going to be an issue. Maybe you have to watch for that. But expanding the lunch period is not a good solution. So it's really up to us to work within the parameters that we've got.
I will say that I have observed the lunch lines in all of our elementary schools. And I am always impressed at how efficient and fast they are. The kids are very polite. They move along. And I think, the thing I'm even more impressed at is how the elementary students recycle when they, when they finish eating. So they, in that twenty minutes, besides getting their lunch, eating their lunch, they also very orderly will come up and do all the recycling they need to do. So you're absolutely correct that, you know, what is the sweet spot in terms of time? So it's something that we certainly will continue to look at and, but it's something that we're definitely responding to, these concerns, and make sure that perhaps the communication is clear and, and we make sure that teachers are more aware of the fact that maybe there are some students in here who haven't, that may be hungry. So anyway, unless it's something else, I may move on to just a couple of other things. One, I want to end with a little bit of comments about my trip to Japan. But in the meantime, before that, I want to mention to parents, I don't know if everybody is fully aware of the fact of how many parent-community forums the Arlington Public Schools sponsors every year. And there are a number, sometimes they're very well attended. We will send reminders out. But there are a lot of them that are quite apropos to some of the issues going on right now. So for example, on the fifteenth, which is next week, actually it's fifteenth, twenty-second, twenty-ninth, and this November fifth, there's Guiding Good Choices. Then there is on the twenty-third, Building Community to Support the LGBTQIA and Youth. And then there's vaping on the sixteenth. The vaping alarm has rung. So on our website, on the quick links, if you went to community, parent-community forums, you will get the complete list of all of these. And I, I urge you to do it because some of these are really important opportunities for parents to learn about some of these issues that their children are facing. But also along those lines, there is another community conversation that's going to be scheduled next Tuesday. On the, that is the sixth, is that the sixteenth?
It's a Thursday, I thought it was Thursday. Hold on. Seventeen, Thursday the seventeenth.
It's Thursday the seventeenth. Oh, I'm going to send it out. I, I thought it was Tuesday.
Thursday the seventeenth.
Tuesday, Thursday the seventeenth. All right. And this is going to be a, a, a community conversation on, again, LGBTQ issues in, and it's going to be at the Robbins Library at, I believe- At, I believe it's, it's at 6:30, right, on the fourth floor. Right. But I'll, I'll be sending reminders out to parents on that as well. So, I just wanna give you some, you know, just sort of a quick overview of the, the 35th anniversary celebration in Japan. We had a small delegation go, just like they brought a small delegation here in April. It was myself and the town manager and three of the people who, who organized the student visits when they come here. As well as help support the, the visit to Japan from Arlington in July. It was just a remarkable trip. I, I think the, the common theme that was discussed with the school officials, the town officials and teachers was how important these sister-city relationships are. Certainly for the adults, but for our students. We have anywhere from 20 to 24 students come here in the spring for 10 days in which they interact with our students and they are in host families. And it has created some bonds that remain so significant. In fact, when we were there, three of the people that were organizing this had been host parents for a number of years, six, seven years. And we had a night where we could meet with some of the students. And I walked in and one of the students just, from Japan, just burst into tears. She was so thrilled to see the person she had stayed with. And, and this, that was 10 years ago. So, these relationships remain very strong and, and really are transformative in terms of your, your worldview and your view of another culture. And that's the whole purpose of, of these sister-cities, is that we, we learn to understand another culture more closely. We develop these, these stronger bonds between them. And my counterpart in said, this is how we're going to achieve world peace, is through these kinds of exchanges with students. Cause then they can, they can have an appreciation of the world. And so, if anything, it's, the trip affirmed certainly my commitment and the commitment of the district to maintain, to maintain this very special relationship. This is the 15th, last year was the 15th year of the, the students coming here and, and we, we have students going there. The, we got an, we got an opportunity to experience something with our students, maybe a little bit different. We spent a half-day in three different schools, which was terrific. And I'm gonna tell you a little bit about that in a second. But we also got to see some of the shrines and, and understand the importance of shrines and just the, all of the, the customs and rituals that are part of every Japanese family. So, when you go to schools, you know, some things are universally the same, and that's children. Particularly at the elementary, you know, they're just so enthusiastic and so happy to see you and, you know, it was just wonderful. Their schools physically are different than ours. They're more of a, like in a California kind of style where you have a building and then a walkway and then another building. And it works because their, their weather isn't quite as extreme as ours for as long as ours is. I will say, it was quite warm there. It was in the 80s all the time. And when our students go in July, it's in the, often in the 90s. And our, their students are in school. So, we go in July because they're still part of their, their summer session. I mean, not their summer, they're, they divide the year into trimesters. So, there are a lot of similarities just on people-to-people level. Another big similarity is their junior high band is excellent. And so, I, I know they, when they come here, they, they see our middle school band, which is excellent. And so, there's something that's very similar. I will say, one difference between their band and ours is that there's more girls in the, in the Japanese band. And they, really, we were, we were spellbound by their performances. But there are differences too. And one is, obvious one is they wear uniforms. And, and, and I saw this in Kyoto and other, in Tokyo too. It's the same uniform. It's navy blue for the girls' skirts and for the boys' pants, or sometimes dark gray and white shirts. And they all wear the same thing, which in that kind of a situation is, you know, the, the teacher said they loved having uniforms because there was no differentiation about the differences in economic background. Another big difference is they, they stay in their classroom and teachers move. They eat in their classroom, so the food is delivered to the classroom. And we went down to the kitchen and, and I actually have a picture that's really, I probably should have put up a slideshow together for you. But they're in, they look like they're in hazmat suits. With gloves and masks and white, I mean, everything is in white. And they deliver the food to the, to the classrooms and they, the kids just, you know, pass out the food. And there is a, there is a rule that you have to eat everything. And you don't return your platter without everything eaten. And one of the big, one, this was actually a huge initiative in the town this year from the mayor that he wanted to have uniform hot lunches for all kids. Though, interesting, we were asking some of the students, cause we ate with them, whether they liked that. And they said they, cause they used to have, bring lunch from home. And some of them admitted they liked having their lunch from home more than they liked to have this uniform lunch every day. But I, again, I, I was impressed at how nutritious it was and how large it was, I must say. They did not, by the way, have much more time to eat than, than, than we have. And they go out for recess. Another difference is that kids stay after school for a much longer day. They don't leave until 4:30, 5 o'clock. They're, most of them are playing some kind of a sport or engaged in some kind of physical activity or some, some type of, I don't know, club or even a learning opportunity. For one of the learning opportunities is, and this is very popular at the middle school level, they call it junior high, is learning the formal T process. I didn't however see any young boys learning it. They were all girls learning it. But they, they have things like that. And they wanted to show us, one of the other, one of the other activities they have is archery. And they had, I don't, hopefully there's no pictures of Adam and I. I could barely pull the bow back. The bow was as, as big as I was. And they do that and they put on a demonstration and they were quite good. There was a wonderful relationship between teachers and students there. You could see that. And certainly, all the administrators I met were all very child-focused. The other thing they do do is they have a lot of change. A administrator doesn't stay in a school more than two years, three years maybe. And they're just rotating people around all the time.
They're assigned by the prefecture.
Yeah, but on the prefecture too.
Yeah, they get moved anywhere else in Kyoto prefecture. They don't belong to the, the city.
Especially the, well, the high school for sure.
The high school is, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But it was, it was wonderful. We had a formal dinner, just like we've had a formal dinner here. And, and the US consul for the Osaka Kyoto prefecture came with a couple of their staff people. They actually have hired staff people on the consulate to manage sister cities. Because there are a lot of US, or for that matter, European, South Australian sister-city arrangements in, in Japan. So, the fact that there's so many, they hired somebody to manage this who came to the dinner. Well, for example, I mean, Boston's sister-city is Kyoto. Now, Boston has 10 sister-cities. We don't, we have one.
Two.
Two, we have two.
Yeah.
What's the other one?
The other one's in, uh, Kyocente.
Oh, that's right, Kyocente, right, right. That's where, absolutely right. Kyocente we have. Of course, I know that. So, anyway, I, if you want to go, the students go in July. And I know you would be certainly welcome to join the, join the group. I don't think we will have another exchange like this for five years, but there are already people talking about the 40th. And the last time we went as a delegation was at the 25th. So, there was some plans around the 30th, but it didn't quite happen. So, happy to talk more about it if, another time if you'd like. It was wonderful.
Anyone who wants to go, we can recommend Sinoi's Hotel.
And Sinoi's Hotel, yes. Sinoi is the person who organizes the students coming here. She's really the program organizer. And by the way, while we were there, they were doing the interviewing. They had a lot of applications. And the, they had 57 finalists and they narrowed it down to 20. And so, for the next six months, they will be preparing. They will be taking extra English classes, learning, you know, learning their, their history of the United States a little bit more. One of the things that actually surprised me, when they've come, you've seen them dance. And I thought, wow, they, they do this choreography in six months? Well, it turns out, it's not exactly the case. When we went to the junior high, they did a performance for us in which the entire school, over four, there were like 400 kids in the, in the gym, did the dance. So, this is actually part of their arts program. So, they, and they, the songs the kids sing, they were, they sang those songs. So, they don't, their, their, their six-month preparations, less about that part of it as it is about learning about the United States.
Great. All right. Consent agenda. All items listed are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event each item will be considered in its normal sequence.
Can you pull the trips?
Well, we already voted one of the trips.
Well, whichever one you didn't vote.
Sure. And we're not doing the minutes, Karen, or?
No.
No.
Okay. So, it's just the warrant. Approval of warrant, warrant number 20066 dated 10/1/2019, amount 383752.69.
So, moved. Second?
Just a correction. I, on the warrant, I thought it was dated 10/15, and this says 10/1.
No, this is the one we're voting.
The one we signed last time.
Got it. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Abstentions unanimous. So, the South Africa trip?
Yeah, I just, I am, I find it really problematic that we support trips that cost $4,150. They're advertised at school. There are flyers. There are information nights that happen in our schools. I can tell you, there is no way that any of my children would ever be able to attend that kind of a trip. And I don't know that that's necessarily the litmus test for whether or not we run them. But I know if my kids can't go, a lot, a lot of kids also can't go. And I'm just, I'm uncomfortable with the idea that we send Arlington Public School employees as chaperones who go. And to me, it makes it feel, you know, access to teachers and staff is one of the most important things for students. And, you know, I don't think that there's a lack of that. I think that the vast, vast majority of faculty and staff spend an inordinate time with our kids. But this, to me, feels kinda like pay-to-play. And so, I don't like it. And so, I'm gonna vote against this one. So, I wanted to pull it off.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Any abstentions? Any opposition? Okay. Mr. Hayner and Ms. Morgan, any abstentions? Okay. You got all that, Karen?
Yeah.
Great. Discussion of district goals and evidence, evidence and superintendent evaluation process. So, it's time to evaluate the superintendent. We actually no longer have the schedule in our policy, but following the old schedule, we're supposed to be doing it for, for the next, for the evaluation forms to be returned at the next meeting, the second meeting in October was the old policy. But we can push that a little bit. It's not a big deal. But end of the month is really like the, the goal.
We don't have the forms yet, right?
No, we don't have the form yet.
Okay.
We don't have the evidence, we don't have the evidence, we don't have the evidence yet.
We don't have the evidence, I missed it.
We don't have the evidence. So, I just wanted to discuss when we wanted, when we wanna get items, how we wanna get items. Karen is asking about, I guess Rod's assistant is doing it this year. But she's asking about whether we want everything in Novus, or if I suggested if something is, you know, huge, maybe we can just have a paper copy. But we're not, it's not clear what the evidence is yet, so.
There, can I speak?
Sure.
So, the evidence we have collected, they're in files. Some of it was submitted electronically and some of it not. However you want it to be submitted, what's best convenient for you, that's what we'll do.
Mr. Hayner?
I, I personally would like it electronically, so if I wanna refer to a piece in the evaluation, I can cut and paste it as opposed to, it, it would be efficient for me. I, I don't know how much extra work that is for you folks. If it's a lot of work, I, I can do the typing, but if it can be provided electronically, I would appreciate it.
Anybody else?
I, I, Novus worked really well, I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, a hundred-page document obviously would be annoying, so.
It's gonna be, no, but it is gonna be probably more than that.
Well, in total, but I mean, you don't want any individual document to be that big necessarily, but.
Right. It's gonna be a large doc. I just wanna.
Oh, all together, yes. No, I get that. No, no, I'm saying each, I, I, hopefully they would be individual documents. I don't want it one file.
Yes, we have like cover sheets and we'll put them in there.
Like individual boom, boom, boom.
By content area, yes. I just need to know like what are the, how you want it organized, and I will make sure that it's organized that way.
Mr. Hayner? Yes?
It seems each year that we get more and more and more. Where we were hoping to get, at least I was hoping to get specifics based on, on the goals that we were discussing and things of that nature. I just find it, oh, fine. I'll take whatever it is and go through it.
Yeah, I mean, there, there are only certain goals that are, that we're evaluating you on.
Right.
Right.
So, if you could.
Well, yeah. I, I, I think that this is something that we need to take another look at. And I would suggest having some kind of retreat before we begin the next goal process. And we can, you know, certainly talk about it, refine what we're doing. I think it's a good ti, I think it's a good and appropriate thing to do.
All right. Any other? So, as far as timing, go ahead, Mr. Hayner.
I wanna say, you, you extended the time for us to turn it into you. Do we have a specific date of when we're going to do?
Well, I wanted to find out when materials will be available, when the narrative will be available.
Certainly, probably the weekend after next. I mean, the following week, early part of the week, I can get to it. I haven't done much on it that, yet. We're working on, Karen and I were working on what all of the different things we wanna put into Novus so that you have that information. And the information that Dr. McNeil's talking about is just all of the evidence from, from curriculum leaders of the work that they have done. But there are more than just that particular goal. There are all the other goals that we have. But for example, one of the, the district goals had to do with hiring practices and diversity reports. I mean, that report you saw, you had tonight, that will be something that can be uploaded. Many of these things you've already heard about, seen over the course of the year. And this is an opportunity to sort of have it all sort of put back together again. Last year, it was a, we made a real effort to make sure that people were in to talk to you so you could see, hear what they were doing. And so, you're getting pretty much sort of some reason of all that.
We, we have two meetings dedicated to the budget in December. We have two meetings scheduled back-to-back in November. So, correct me if I'm wrong, it's gonna be, have to be one of those two meetings in November.
Right.
Yes, yes.
So, probably be the 21st.
We'll get it on a, yes, the twenty-first.
You'll, you'll talk, you'll talk to Karen and you'll give us a deadline of when you want us to.
So...
Yes.
It sounds like maybe that, um, Dr. Boddy can get us the narrative, which I think I'd like to see first before
Oh, yes.
delving into things. May, by, it looks like the early part of the week of the twenty-first. Does that sound like a good timing? Um, and then we could maybe get things to you like by the thirty-first? I'm just throw, throwing out random dates, to be discussed on the fourteenth, or maybe, maybe the first is to...
Discuss, discuss on the fourteenth? If we're not getting the documents till the thirty-first, we have to put it out?
No, no, we, we would have to give, I mean, thirty-first, maybe you, we can, you can give us more time, but we would get you our comments by the, or by, or by, maybe by Monday the fourth or something.
So, yeah, so if, yeah, so if we're not, yeah, if we're not actually reporting on the evaluation until the fourteenth
Yeah.
Then, then it could, it can be into
Be longer.
November fifth or something for the deadline.
Right, okay, yeah, so that's, that seems like the good
Thank you.
Good timing.
So, I just wanna be clear, the, the way that the documents will be submitted will be by the district goals from last year.
Mm-hmm.
And they will be, uh, have, in individual folders, based upon, and they will be labeled by content. They have evidence cover sheet that describes, that has, describes the actions, the rationale, and the, a description of the evidence.
Thank you.
That will be uploaded into Novus, and that's the way you would like to have it.
Fine with me.
No, good way. Yeah.
Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's always awkward because there are district goals don't really work as well with the evaluation thing, but it sounds good.
Yeah.
She's pulling us off every year.
And, and they're gonna be, as Dr. Boddy alluded to, they're basically supporting the presentation that the curriculum leaders came and gave last spring, so those were connected to the district goals. Okay.
Alright, anything else on this? Uh, no policy, so committee and liaison reports. Budget.
Budget. So, we had our meeting last week. Unfortunately, Mr. Mason was ill and Dr. Boddy was in Japan, so it was just us, uh, but we did discuss the budget calendar, of which you have a draft version in your, um, packet-ish here, and we'll approve that next week, but that's just, if anyone notices anything, tell me. Um, we also discussed, we're going to be working on the format and timing of the currently monthly budget reporting, we think it can be somewhat less frequent, um, and we'll be meeting again in the next couple of weeks. And then, I need, um, I realized something when I was sitting here, that we had talked at our last meeting about enrollment, and when I talked to Mr. Mason because, after our meeting, because he wasn't able to attend, I talked to him and he mentioned that the consultant that he was looking into has a deadline of October twentieth to get into this cycle. And I'm concerned that our next meeting isn't for two weeks, and if we need to approve budget for hiring the consultant, um, it seems like we need to do it now. And I know we don't have any information, I mean, he was going back to them and getting a new estimate, and I don't know what that was, but I'm just wondering, what do we want to do? Do we want to try and guess and give the superintendent approval to spend a certain amount? Do we need to wait, you know, do we wanna beg them to give us five days and, and, um, I just don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think, unless it requires a budget transfer, then it's within the, the administration's authority
Okay.
to contract for that.
Okay.
And, you know, we usually were, we usually don't even approach budget transfers until much later in the year.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Yeah, it's not an issue.
This, we might, I, what he's going back is that, what they gave an estimate of a, of amount for every, for five years, and I said, "We just need to have, we're gonna do a one-year, which is twelve thousand five hundred." Now, whether that's gonna change or not, I don't know. We want, we want to have a forecast. And, you know, we can do, later on, see how the forecast matches to actuals, but I don't think that we need to have a re-forecast every year for five years. And that's what my understanding was, what the proposal was. So, that's what he's going back to talk about.
Okay.
Great. Alright. Um, policies and procedures?
We have a doodle out.
Nope, great.
We're gonna schedule a meeting.
Right. Uh, CIAA.
We are gonna meet on October twenty-fourth at five forty-five for our school committee meeting.
Okay. Community relations.
Uh, we met briefly to interview some candidates for our school community's representation for TAC. Um, we have a candidate to bring to the committee, but, um, timing being what it was, we had to, we have to wait till next time, so hopefully we can prove that. Oh, and then also, we are, have a doodle out for a meeting on after-school issues, uh, where we are continuing to grapple with issues both big and small in our district.
Great. Facilities?
Nothing to report.
Uh, legal services?
Nothing to report.
Building committee, we already covered. Calendar committee.
I think administration is sending out a doodle soon.
Alright. Uh, election modernization committee.
Uh, oh, uh, no, we haven't met since we last, but we have a meeting coming up.
Superintendent search process.
We also have the doodle out.
Okay. And negotiation, nothing. Any liaison reports? Uh, go ahead, Sue.
Uh, so I went to visit Stratton, Stratton's my, you know, sort of liaison relationship, and, um, had a great conversation with PTO there. Um, they echoed Ms. Markin's concern about the way that, um, classroom, uh, data is presented, that it's sort of, because it's such a, a strong, a large SLC program, it looks like they have smaller classrooms than they really do, so that was actually a common concern among people at the PTO. Um, other things were, you know, kindergarten cutoff ti, um, questions about the high school, um, library, oh, library books or books for new teachers, they felt that there was a need for more readers, um, so those were the things we discussed.
Great. Um, just, uh, update from the AEF, um, uh, they'll be announcing a, an additional funding of, of the SEL grant, Social Emotional Learning Grant. But one thing I was excited about was that Sarah Byrd, it was, did attend our meeting and talked about doing a parent university
Oh, okay.
program in the spring and, and, I guess, looking, or in March or some, sometime in that year, so that'd be something very exciting, uh, in addition to all of the community forums we talked about, um, like a day-long parent university that other towns have had.
On everything or in?
No, on social emotional learning type, type stuff. Any other liaison reports? Alright. Uh, announcements? You don't have any announcements, Bill?
None tonight.
Oh, my goodness.
It's after nine thirty-eight.
Alright.
All announcements.
Future agenda items. Great, we do not have executive session, so...
Or should we adjourn?
All those in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned.